Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to ones online. Make sure you are muted. And we'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything to add to the agenda?
The one item I, the honor treasurer had brought it up, the, you're getting a hand out here, Board of Commissioners meeting gambling permits renewals and renew, um, for two different institutions. And then also there's the Becker County cash comparison that will swap out the document you have in your packet.
Okay. Motion to compare?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Barry, second.
Well, second.
Second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry. Minutes of the January sixteenth meeting, any corrections or additions?
I just have one, um, under county administrator report number five, the cornerstone, I just thought we should maybe add in there that they were requesting funding. It just says that they were there to update by Karen and McKenzie, board will review if they're able to provide funding. So maybe we should just include that they requested funding. I don't, I don't recall the dollar amount, fifty thousand maybe, so.
No, I think so.
That was the only thing I had.
I didn't have anything. Nothing?
Nope.
Return.
Nothing.
Hearing no other corrections or additions, uh, all in favor, motion to approve.
I'll make a post-up for the minutes.
Well, second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry. Consent agenda, anything on there, want, so, anybody wants a poll? Hearing none, is the motion to approve the consent agendas as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Erica. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, we'll move on to open forum. Thanks, Nick. Just a reminder, when you're at the open forum, speak to the board and be allowed five minutes to speak. Try to stay within that time. With that, Willis Matson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Willis Matson, I live out, um, by Big Toe Lake in, um, Shaw Lake Township. Wish to speak to you on the matter of the removal of the planning commission. Remember, I sent you a letter, it was quite late, so I apologize, I hope you've had a chance to look at it. I won't read the, the letter, but I do want to touch on some of the, the high points of the, the matter. Um, we followed the, following closely the Christians handling of the conditional use permit from in question, for a large swine facility. My associates and I witnessed the commissioner willing to act on an incomplete record and then failing the final established procedure for extension of time for completing that record before recommending final action by this board. Mr. Lindahl, the planning commission representative represents my district tried dumb and made a point out both with the procedure of flaws and the factual deficiencies in the record. By conducting his own research and consulting outside experts, including a county attorney, Mr. Lindahl, um, discovered that the commission had indeed made correctable procedural errors. But the tactics used to silence Mr. Lindahl were unprofessional, abusive, undignified, unjustified, bordering on outright harassment. Throughout the ordeal, Mr. Lindahl was persistent, but conducted himself with dignity and respect for his fellow commissioners. He deliberately refused to ignore serious missteps by the commission and staff. Instead, he sought to discharge his duties to the best, in the best interest of the county and its residents of his district. Mr. Lindahl went above and beyond the call of duty, exhausting all means at his disposal to prevent these errors from causing harm to the county and to the resources the residents value. Mr. Lindahl represents a remoted voice on the commission, who actually stands up for conservation of resources and protection of lands and waters from activities prohibited by ordinance. Indeed, so Mr. Lindahl speaks for me and my neighbors. Dismissing now, all the false allegations before you, using the powerful message to all who might want to stand up for Becker County's natural resources and serve on voluntary commissions such as the planning commission. What civic-minded person would want to volunteer to serve on this commission if this kind of behavior is not only tolerated, but sustained by this board? I urge the board to resign and reject the commission's recommendation in this matter. Also want to point out the, the philosophy behind conditional use permits that seem to be ignored here. The basically condition use permit is a process by which a practice or a project or an activity is fundamentally by default to be denied because it doesn't comply with the ordinance. And the process set up is supposed to determine if there are extenuating circumstances by which this project could be approved in spite of being prohibited. That process was not followed by your commission, in fact, it was the opposite. So I think there's a fundamental flaw in the way all conditional use permits are handled in the, in the county that needs to be reexamined. So with that, I would stand for any questions, otherwise thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willis.
This is coming on the board agenda about ten fifteen, and Mr. Lindahl will speak at that time. I just wonder if anybody, during time constraint, wants to speak to this issue if they have to leave before ten fifteen. Okay. Just come up, state your name and address, please.
Good morning. Uh, Mr. Chair, Craig Hall, I am on the planning commission. And today, I guess, being I have to leave by nine thirty, I would like to just make a few comments and to elaborate on why we came to the decision. Actions speak louder than words, and I think all you guys know that. A quick rough show quickly that I'd like kind of use is if you go back to when you were in high school, if you played on a team sport. When you played on a team sport, not an individual sport, everybody was kind of geared toward the future. Didn't mean you were going to go out and play college, didn't mean you were going to play in the NFL. But many of us, or the majority of us, went on to work in a company or in an organization. And when you do that, it doesn't really matter what you as an individual do, you each perform a duty, but we all kind of follow a set of rules in how you conduct yourself. Where I'm going with this is, one action like Mr. Willis brought up is not what led us to this portion. You've witnessed a job, Erica's witnessed it because you've been a part of it. Every single meeting, it's kind of the same thing. I look at every individual as a past business owner. We need to make decisions, who's the best in what area? Put people in areas where they have skills, where they bring things to the table, but can follow the direction of a coach or direction of a boss. That's not what Steve does. Steve has an, an agenda that he's trying to push. I think he would serve phenomenally while working for the EPA. But that's not really what the agenda and what the direction is of the Becker County planning and zoning. When we evaluate everything that comes in front of us, our job is to stay within the lanes and the basically the rules that this group has directed us to follow. Where to analyze each of those things on merit and then make a recommendation to you as the board to make the final direction. If you constantly have someone who is going around you, behind your back, that, that doesn't work. And if you look at some of the actions that we put forth and I listed in the, in the minutes that I sent to you guys, you'll see if you go look back and you say, oh, that's exactly what happened. That is not how you conduct, I'll say, Robert Rules of Order or within any different group. Going back to my thing as the example when you were in high school. If the quarterback was sent out to make a play and he decided, I don't care what the coach told me, I'm going to do it my way, how long is he going to be on the field? No different thing with an employee. If you tell employee to do something and you're the boss, if he repeatedly decides, you know, I know better, then you're going to remove him. That's kind of what we're looking to do here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Howard Anderson.
Mr. O'Condon, commissioners, I'm Howard Anderson, I'm in, from Forest Township. And I come to urge you to not go along with the recommendation of the planning commission to remove Steve Lindahl. I think Mr. Hall gave the example of exactly why you shouldn't remove Steve. It's not a football team. It's not a business where the boss like Mr. Hall can tell someone what to do. The job of the planning and zoning commission is to protect the lands and waters of Becker County. Steve Lindahl is superbly prepared to do this. He's a lake scientist, has master's degree in limnology. Um, and, and the one issue that Mr. Hall alluded to saying it's not the reason is the best example. The swine farm, there was some new data that came up. What did Steve do about that? Now, you may not have followed exactly the, the protocols, but I would guess that this commission would have wanted to know from the hunt club that where the buildings were initially to be would be hit by BBs if they were hunting at the hunting group. And Steve went out and researched that. He measured in terms of where the, the, uh, lake was and the marsh was, and always he does his due diligence. Now, I worked with Steve on a lake association. Steve can be crusty. Steve always does his due diligence and he goes the extra mile. I, I guess, the other thing I have to say is, I'm not quite sure what's going on on the zoning and planning commission. When they put an ad in the paper about a public meeting about Steve's removal and Steve was never spoken to, no due process was followed, it sounds to me like, as, as Mr. Hall pointed out, he's a businessman. And as I follow, uh, planning and zoning, when these conditional use permits come up, it seems like every business gets a pass. Not a neighborhood that didn't want a, a gravel pit in the middle of it, not a neighborhood that didn't want a gas station where it was, not neighbors who didn't want to have a swine farm where it was. I think if anything, the commissioners should congratulate and thank Steve Lindahl for the hard work he does above and beyond anything he should, the others are doing on the, on the planning and zoning commission. So I strongly urge you to keep Steve on that commission, frankly, because he's good at it, he's an expert in some of those fields, willing to do the due diligence and go the extra mile, and maybe a check on the sort of, uh, always pro-business, uh, kind of organization that the planning and zoning commission seems to be coming as I follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Rick Anderson.
On a totally different subject. Thank you for letting me speak today.
State, state your name and address.
Oh, Rick Anderson, two zero six seven seven, County Highway twenty-six, D L. It has been rumored that today is the day. Other than February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, what day is that? It's supposedly the day that a clique of county commissioners will terminate, which a large cross-section of voters' opinions, one of the best county administrators Becker County has ever had, Pat Omen. Before going into any details, I say it isn't interesting, isn't it interesting that it appears once again, a decision amongst a few commissioners has been rendered prior to a public meeting? One could easily interpret that the open meeting law under Minnesota statutes, chapter thirteen D, requires public bodies to meet in an open session where all members of the body participating in the meeting must be able to hear one another and can hear all the discussion. Now, I'm not an attorney, but a retired financial advisor of over thirty years, yet I don't feel colluding in backrooms by a few commissioner meets the criteria of the open meeting Minnesota statute. Today I speak representing a large body of Becker County voters, maybe even a majority, but terminating Pat Omen is nothing more than a selfish power grab by a clique of commissioners. Throwing out all objectivity such as Pat's accomplishments, which are numerous, just a few include cutting employee turnover in half from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, implementing effective budgeting and using objective criteria for county expenditures, implementing regular reviews for all county employees, and the list goes on and on. What would be lost through Pat's termination? The county will have to pay him a forty thousand dollar severance package. What does the taxpayer get for that other than nothing? Pat will be entitled for up to one year of unemployment compensation. Payment of that compensation will be from the state, but it's not free money as the county's rating gets worse and Becker County will pay more to the state. It's the old moving it from one pocket to another. A probable lawsuit for wrongful termination by Pat. I can't imagine the taxpayer costs and bad image in that long drawn-out process. If the county loses, we could easily be talking about hundreds of thousands or more wasted taxpayer dollars. And the list of wasted taxpayer, taxpayer dollars just goes on and on. In conclusion, unfortunately, these few commissioners have the authority to terminate Pat Omen. While their claims and accusations hold up in court of law when they're testifying, only time will tell. Fortunately, as taxpayers, we also have the authority to pursue bad decisions made by these commissioners. If you think you can run roughshod over the taxpayers, you are mistaken. There are consequences of your decisions. By the way, an alert, if you think this is the end of their antics, probably not. It has also been rumored that at a union rally, these same commissioners are targeting Richard Varberg as their next vis, victim. I ask you, are these type of backdoor commissioners what we want in Becker County? And I just say to the board, may God's wisdom be bestowed upon you in your wise decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we continue, um, we're getting reports from people online that there's a lot of crackling going on, it's people, people speaking. Could we have a moment, just swap out the microphone?
Okay.
And, uh...
I know, uh, when well spoken was, we might have been just a little close to the mic or...
Right. We could have pulled...
Could I do?
My name's Joe Steiner. I'm at one eight oh four eight, three hundred sixtieth Avenue. I'm here for the same reason, and I, I got a lot of the same stuff, I won't even read it now, that I agree with Rick, so. I've come to realize that I've been wasting my time talking to Nelson Jepson and Meyer. They have an agenda, and Nelson wants his power back so, so he can handle the employees. Jepson, she's prevailing her promise to the union that helped her get elected, not, or the union or employees. Myers, I brought you up there, you're just a puppet. I'm here to represent the voters of Becker County, so from now on, this is what I'm speaking to. There's three commissioners, Nelson, Jepson, Myers, that don't have a good reason to fire Pat Omen, which leads me to believe they have agenda. The voters' residents, and I have discussed this, and don't want the added expenses that Rick talked about. Omen's been blamed for the investigation on the legal budget, he had no part of it. The communication problem, I hear from Nelson, Jepson, and Meyer, well, you asked them if they went to his office and talked to him? No, they never made the attempt. Jepson made a statement over the phone to one of the citizens that the employees and the unions officials want him fired. Talking to the major employees, I found that Pat has been, been very helpful to them, so. And he's, shows the state, oh yeah, showing the status on the employees, blah, in two thousand twenty-two, we lost fifty-one. In two thousand twenty-three, we only lost twenty-eight. Through the long phone visits with the six union officials, five said Pat Omen worked well with them, he was professional, prompt, and Pat finds ways to work through things. The disagreements, the union officials said Pat is now doing what labor, labor attorneys have done, and he's good to work with, and he's saving the taxpayers' dollars. So after talking with the union officials, I was inspired. It was, I was proud just for standing up for Pat Omen, who shows these qualities while serving our county. A good review come from five out of six unions. That's big. A department head, that, a department head did thank Barburg for the work he's done, showing a great job that Omen's been doing as the minister here. I have talked to many voters and negative, get negative feelings why the way this is handled. This process has been brought by Jepson and Myers makes no sense. The duration and cost and, and breaking the morality of the county workers actually. The commissioners are supposed to be doing the will of the voters. Now the voters are disappointed. They're feeling like they're misrepresented. And I do want to thank Barburg for being honest and the hard work he's done for the And, uh, by the way, as of Friday, I have not seen them phones that you were supposed to hand in.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. I have some handouts here, if you'd permit me to hand them to board members. My name is Brian Alstine, I'm ten forty-one Timber Drive in Detroit Lakes. Um, I'm here representing Lakes Area Patriots and many of the citizens of Becker County, and we want to request that the board of commissioners go on record in opposition to the redesigned Minnesota flag and seal. The flag and seal belongs to the citizens of Minnesota, and we were not consulted in this change. We would ask that Becker County Board of Commissioners do three things. One, state Becker County's opposition to the statewide adoption of a redesigned flag and seal. Two, make the state of Minnesota aware of Becker County's opposition to these emblems. And three, resolve to spend zero dollars on replacing the current flag and seal. The board in doing this would be joining other Minnesota counties that are making efforts on this, including Houston, Crow Wing, Wadena, McLeod, Nobles, Fillmore, Douglas. And as of last night, I believe Hubbard County is meeting this morning at their board meeting also considering this, um, uh, opposition to this flag. You have in front of you a petition that has been circulating in Becker County stating the citizens' opposition. I think there are sixty-four pages in the bundle you have, and, um, there are still more out there that haven't been collected. Uh, you also have copies of resolutions that have been passed in other counties, uh, for your convenience and maybe using as a template to, uh, pass this resolution. We respectfully asking for swift action on this matter. The grassroots opposition is building in Becker County and across the state. There is time to stop this nonsense and needless expenditure of taxpayer dollars, and we would like to see Becker County lead the way in responsive and decisive actions to condemn this hostile action by the state on its citizens. Uh, thank you for your thoughtful consideration on this.
Mr. Chair, just a note, um, Jim Joy contacted me and, um, I forwarded it on to John, and there is some discussion on our agenda, uh, at a later time, but, um, so I think we will be at least considering something. Um, we have some information in our packet that says that it's not required by most of our governments to, to add, to change our flag or to add the new one, um, but we'll go into more discussion when the, uh, when we have that. And Clay County was also considering something, more so on the monetary end, according to Jim's email.
I was under the impression that the law stated that by the end of two thousand twenty-four, every county had to be making efforts to replace their end of the flags.
It was only those that are required to, like the courts, and we're not, we don't fall under that.
Just the state government offices.
The state government offices.
Okay.
So it won't be, it won't be us needing to replace that.
Okay. At the same time, I, I believe it would be a real show of strength and unity with your voters in Becker County to push against this at the state level.
I think we'll discuss it at, at, at the time it comes up on the agenda, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole.
Um, my name is Nicole Martinson, one nine zero nine nine, County Highway twenty-five, Detroit Lakes. Um, morning, Chair and county commissioners. Uh, today I'm here to speak... Today I'm here to speak on the situation with Pat and the decision that I'm sure is going to be made today on his employment. I'm here to speak specifically to Commissioner Meyer, Jepson and Nelson. I can't believe I'm here today talking to three grown adults on how to act, behave and what leadership is. It's just so disheartening what's been going on. Your job as a leader is to bring people together, grow people, make them better. The thing that I can't understand through this whole thing is when are you going to take ownership? You're only as strong as your weakest link. And if you think that Pat is not a good administrator, that falls on you. You take zero ownership in any of this. One of your concerns was not having your monthly meetings, yet you didn't approach him about it. And another piece of report he didn't give you. These are things that can be fixed. These are not disastrous, job-ending, life-altering things that you're about to do. Let me ask you this, do you have children? When they make mistakes or they're doing something that you don't agree with? Or you think isn't right? Do you say, well, I think I'm going to fire you as my child and go look for a new one? And if that doesn't work out, I'll do the same. You knew what you were going to do before you even took office. I was a union member during this time. I was at the meetings. I heard what was said. I knew what the agenda was. First order of business, get rid of Pat. Check, who's next on the list? And right on down the line. You're listening to a minority. I don't know. This could be a wrong number, 150, 200 people in the union? There's about 34,000 people in Becker County. I have yet to hear one of those majority come here and speak against Pat. All I've heard is everybody coming to speak in favor of him. Yet you're choosing to follow the minority. You ran because the union asked you to. You ran based on what they told you, not from any of the experiences you've had. You didn't come in this job with an open mind. You came in here with a decision already made. I'm sorry, but this gets emotional for me because what happened is happening to Pat happened to me. You have no idea what that did to my family. You don't have to like somebody. But as a leader, are they doing their job? And if you don't think they are, are you helping them? Was there ever a performance plan? Did you guys ever take my advice from last time I spoke? Did you sit down with him, with everybody? There's a disconnect here. There's tension. There's this, there's that. What can we do about that? You owe that to us and you didn't do it. You're not trying to fix this. You're just trying to get rid of the problem without ever addressing it. What do you do at school, Dave, when you're teaching your kids? I know that there's counselors, there's this, they get put on IEPs. Because you're trying to grow and help them. Or do you just say, we never really discussed anything with them. We never tried to help them, but he's just not up to par with our standards as a student. So we're going to make him, we're going to fire him as a student and he can go somewhere else. His family can uproot their lives. This is just ridiculous. And I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed to be represented by people who don't care and come in with an agenda. Just remember, you will reap what you sow and maybe not on this side of heaven. But someday, when something like this happens to you or somebody you love. I don't love you. I mean, you know what I mean? That came out wrong. Somebody that you respect. Totally lost my train of thought. The first person you're going to think of is Pat. And the first other thing you're going to think of is how you treated him. This is a most wonderful community, but all you have managed to do, the three of you, is create a divide when your job is to bring us together. Thank you.
Tom, are you here to speak to, for the zoning? Okay, thanks.
Just so you know, I love you.
That's hello from the ones that have signed up. Thank you. Moving on the agenda, reports and correspondence.
Mr. Chair, I can start. I want to recognize Matt Erickson, who is our Veteran Service Officer. He has now been, is on his way to overseas to protect us with the National Guard and keep him in your thoughts and prayers when he is, during his deployment on all those serving with him. He has, he has forwarded some discussion items, and I think Pat may have given them to the full board about what we can do to increase or, or kind of promote National Guard members and veterans in Becker County. So as we move forward, if you haven't got this email or this forward, please, please look for it because it will, it would enhance those, enhance the time that they're away and give them more comfort knowing that they're being watched out by their employer. We also had the University of Minnesota, we had our extension awards, so we picked those. I mentioned to you earlier that we, we were going to nominate some people for, for egg awards that through University of Minnesota. We will be notifying those. Dave and I had Sunnyside. We are doing very well financially and the employment, we have rebounded and are nearly at, at full employment. So that's, it's really good to hear and we're really, have a positive cash flow out there. And we, and you have to know that Sunnyside is one of the few nursing homes that is doing exceptionally well. And, and we can be very proud of our transition to Minnie, Minnie Waska management. They are doing excellent.
Yeah, and our management company said that we are a standalone example for a good running nursing home, yeah.
For a small nursing, we're one of the top, top in the state for, for all of our, well, financially and performance wise, so. Richard and I had NRM. One of the things I brought forward through NRM was the request for Senator Klobuchar to ask that we be, the wolf be delisted from the, and that then the state can manage the wolf population. I don't know if you have any hunters out here, but I know there are wolves now in my area where we hunt. You know, even south of Lake Park, they're expanding their range. We need to have the DNR control though, so we are going to be addressing that later on in the agenda. We're moving forward with the Dunton Lock Shelter. We have an ATV ordinance up by Wolf Lake that's going to allow the ATVs to jump up on the road right away so they can get down to Wolf Lake on a trail system there. We are updated on the Toad, Toad Mountain property. We're still, there is an offer been made and we'll see if that goes through. Then we'll, then we'll work with that organization to move forward with. I don't know where we're going to, where we're going to go with that, but county ownership, if we can find the grant money, if the grants are available for us to purchase that property and make a public area there. You have anything you want to touch base on there?
We also talked about that, making some primitive camping out there at Chimpel Park. And we'll see how that goes. That sounded really good. I don't know what, what it's all, we're not, we're just getting into that now, but it would just be for tents and just primitive camping place for somebody to go for the weekend. And then the only other thing is we're looking for a seasonal tram operator to run the tram out there, so.
Now, that's only on mostly weekends and holidays and through extended holidays. We have some things on the agenda. There's, we did fill the Forester position. And the other thing there probably of interest would be that conservation land acquisition, that 80 that we're looking at purchasing through that, through the, what, what company bought? I can't remember the company that bought that.
Was that Potlatch or?
Well, it was Potlatch Land, but was bought by that company trying to keep it in public.
Right, they're trying to keep it, keep it good for the public, what they're trying to do.
John, or actually Nicole and I had Sheriff. And we're looking at working with Klein McCarthy to look at our, our site out on the, out on the, out by the jail to see if there's room for, for looking at a new impound lot. But we want to make sure that we have that site ready if we ever have any future building out there for the sheriff. So we want to put, position it correctly and that will be coming on our next agenda, next meeting. We received a K-9 funding update. We received, we're at about $9,000 that we've received for donations for, for the K-9 unit. We're applying for a $7,500 grant, so we're still some, doing some fundraising for that. Had a fire paging upgrade discussion and through the fire chiefs, how we want to move forward. And just that, just within a day or two, they received some information on that. We can maybe do a cheaper version and get better, better paging for the fire departments and rescue through the armor system. That will also be coming forward. I think everything else is on the agenda. We did, we did discuss the vacancies. Did we just, is it on the agenda to have some emerg, or some temporary?
It's not.
We felt like there's, there were short deputies and there's some areas where we can have temporary deputies from other areas that were willing to fill in some part-time spots. I don't think that needed to come before board because it's.
It's on the agenda.
That one's on the agenda?
I'm sorry.
Sheriff number four personnel requests.
And that was, that was just for filling in the gaps when we have shortcomings now, when we're short staff. We did discuss that we would consider offering bonuses. Many, many counties are offering bonuses and, and my concern was if it's within budget. So if there's been a vacancy for, and you have enough money in your budget because of that vacancy, then we would consider it. But that, those proposals, I think HR is looking at what's, what's allowable under certain rules there. And then the only other committee was courthouse. The only thing that's not on the agenda, I think, is a discussion about the minutes books that, there was a request to move forward with digitizing them. I did not feel there was a need to do that for $5,000, $600 at this time, but we're going to look into a little bit more.
We're also going to try, the museum has digitized some of our tax records. So we're going to, Mary's going to go and see if they can do those books too possibly.
Okay, that was it.
I can go next. We had Becker County Children's Initiative. There were no funding requests for that meeting, so not much to update. Also had our EDA meeting. For that meeting, we had Extension Educator Fernando, and I'm not going to be able to pronounce his last name. But he came and spoke with us just about different programs and workshops that they provide through the extension. And there's several in there that it really kind of surrounding community economics, business retention and expansion, community leadership and tourism assessment. So we're going to continue to look at some of those workshops. There's a cost to some of them. Some of them are free, so we're going to get more information to see what would be good for us to look into. We also discussed creating a business expansion committee. Also had the Crow Wing Watershed meeting. We passed the, or we approved, I'm sorry, the land and water resource narrative draft and the priority issues draft. Anybody that wants to look at those drafts, they are on the Hubbard County Soil and Water District website. And then I had Mohuvi meeting, just the Mohuvi, the early learning ship scholarship. The dollar amount allocated for that scholarship was greatly increased and the criteria changed to include younger children under three. It used to only be children under three qualified if they had a sibling that was over three. Well, now anybody under, any child under three can qualify. So be sure to, if that's something that you're interested in, speak with Mohuvi. I think that's it.
I just want to say, Erica, that Fernando there though, he did have a lot of different things for us. For example, the WeFest, you know?
Yes.
It doesn't really benefit Becker County residents as much as it could. And so those programs he had, they, there is a cost to them, but they're, they're pretty reasonable. What, they're kind of, we're just covering their costs.
Yeah.
And, and that was, I think for Becker County business, that was really, I hope that we take advantage.
The WeFest one specifically really was for the county and city to determine how, how much do we benefit from it?
Yeah, how much and what, what other things can we do to benefit?
To benefit. And that was the same thing with the tour assessment. Essentially, they have people that come into our county as tourists and then evaluate where, you know, if there's something that we promote, did they have a easy time finding it? So that, there's lots of stuff that we can do to promote tourism and business in the county, so.
Yeah.
Definitely something to look into.
I was really impressed by that. So, and then I'll, I'll just finish. I had environmental with John and we're talking about another, another new truck to pull our trailers because we are going to be short one when, when the seat, when the summer season comes.
It's not a brand new one. It could be a brand new one, but right now we're still looking for a good, low mile, used one, so.
Yeah, it's hard to find a brand new truck in America. I can't believe it, but it's, that's hard to believe right now.
Are you talking a tractor or a compactor?
Just a tractor.
Daycap.
A daycap tractor with a wet kit and, and we can't find a new one. There's, there's a couple of new ones, but when you look at the motors in, in them and talk to some of these bigger trucking companies, they're not something we want. You know, they're the ones that, they're having, all these trucks got emissions on them now and there, there's a lot of trouble with them. But the good ones, the ones who've got it figured out, we can't get one of those right now. And so we, I, I hope we can find one. And then we talked about that storage building for recyclables. We got a lot of cardboard sitting outside. It's all bundled up and it's sitting outside. And sometimes the market, it isn't worth hauling it. When the economy slows down and everybody quits ordering from Amazon, then the cardboard's not worth anything. And then when it picks up, then, then, you know, so it's kind of like grain for a farmer. You got, you got to put it somewhere and take care of it until, until we can get a fair price for it. So we're talking about, you know, maybe a post-frame building or maybe a hoop building or something to put, to store that in. So when the market does go up, then we can get rid of that.
Just mention the possible modification where they load the trailer.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, we don't have a very good way of loading these. We've got these new trailers and what they're doing, they load them with a backhoe and then they pack it down with that backhoe, but the guy can't see what he's doing. And so he's, sometimes he's damaging the trailer, not with the hole, but sometimes there's railroad ties and different stuff in there. And so I was out there and looked at it and what we need to do is get over the top of the trailer so that when you are packing this stuff in there, you're not damaging the trailer. Because we have some very expensive trailers and we're also loading Clay County's trailers. And so we don't want to damage any of these. And so I think that we, we did have an engineered plan. We need to find it now for a ramp that would extend over the trailer so that when we pack them, we can see what we're doing. And so that, that's something that I hope we can get done because we don't want to be, we don't want to be hurting these trailers.
Oh, there you go. One more thing to add that I think we've got our agreement done with Grand Forks Land Field to deliver some tonnage up there that Prairie Lakes, Minnesota, solid waste and Farquhar County. And versus Polk County, that's about 30 some ton less than Polk County, so moving forward with that, so.
John, one thing with that, with that building, I have a real concern building a building to store recyclables if, if there's, if we're, if the value isn't. a building to store recyclables if, if there's, if we're, if the value isn't there to pay for that. I mean, if, if we build a building to make our recyclables worth a dollar more a ton for, I mean, it would take eighty years. I mean, I, I'm going to have to see the financial benefit to, you know, so when, when we go through that process, we're going to have to show that the expected money earned off from putting those cardboard under roof for a period of time, what, what is the expected gain in revenue, you know, to make it, to make it pay for that? You know, that's where my concern would come in, that I don't want to build it and build a three-hundred-thousand-dollar building and not, and it should be paid for within five years if there's a, if there's a marketable gain on that. So that's, that's where I'm kind of thinking, just so when you go to committee, that's where I'm thinking.
And I, I agree with you, Barry, but it's still, and there's, it's not just the cardboard, it's the glass. We don't, we can't have snow in it. There's a lot of different things, and, and we have invested a lot into recycling now. I mean, we've got, and we've gotten grants for it, and we've, we've really, as a county, we're ahead of a lot of other counties in recycling. And, and I'm with you. I don't want, I didn't want to do it either, but you can't, you can't, when we seen it slow down here a while back and all that stuff sat with snow and rain on it, then it devalues it. So it, it, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place, and the only thing I'm saying is if we build a building, it will, and we build a decent building, it will be there for many years to protect this stuff. But yes, it, it does have to, it, there's got to be something in it for us.
You know, another, another possibility, and I have no idea if it's feasible, but right now they're covering beet, beet piles with tarps because of the heat, so they're trying to keep the cold in, but it would do, serve the same purpose, big tarps, and maybe after they're done with them, I can't see the beet industry going to be keeping them for any length of time to use, to use a tarp system on, you know, for a temporary. But just something to think about in your committee.
We're looking at different options of how we can handle this and something probably long-range or something short-range, so, and see if there's any grounds available.
I had John, I had transit. So from last year, our rider ships are up eight percent. So actually Kevin also said that normally they have five buses running regularly, and now they're almost to the point where they need to have six running all the time, so that's good, we're busier. Also too, we talked about the new bus that is hopefully going to be here at the end of the month. That's, that's the plan. And then Kevin kind of needed to look at his budget a little bit, so he's going to try to adjust his advertising a little and mainly have print advertising, but John also brought up that a lot of the people that ride those buses do watch TV3, so he's going to do some, some ads on TV3. Do you have anything else on the transit?
No, that's-
Then I had a historical society meeting. They are looking to hire a new front desk person because they're getting busier, and the executive director needs that person to move into research and also be the executive director's assistant also, because she's, they're, they're needing that help. And then also the Da Vinci exhibit brought in a gross of a hundred and four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Now, it did cost, that's with donations and, and people paying to come in. Now, it did cost ninety thousand dollars, but the whole point of having the, the Da Vinci exhibit was to give exposure to the museum and make, you know, and they were, they're okay with a, with an even cost almost. I mean, they made a little bit, so it wasn't too bad. And then their annual meeting is, I believe, on the twenty-second of February, so their donors will come into the museum, they'll give them, they'll give them cake and cookies and whatever else they can give them and have a meeting. Fair Board, had a Fair Board meeting, and the fair is going to adjust the fair a little bit. They're going to have a rodeo on Wednesday and Thursday for the fair. They're still going to have their derbies on Friday and Saturday, so they want to, they want to try that instead of having the tractor pole. The tractor pole, they, they've lost, they made some money a couple of years ago, not breaking even on it, so. And the tractor pole company raised their prices to bring the, to bring the, the skid in, so they're going to try that out. And it's, it sounds exciting, and they're pretty, pretty excited about doing that, so hopefully it'll work. And then also the DNR came in. I don't know if anybody, you ever been in that, the fish, the DNR building with all the fish tanks? Well, the fish tanks are leaking, so they need to, they're, they're, they can manage to have them for a couple, maybe a year or two more, but they need to replace those tanks. And those are actually tanks that were built to put into there, so they're, you know, you can't order those tanks if they haven't built. So they're looking at exploring, you know, they have, they have a cost that they are equipped for replacement, but they also, there are some DNR grants that the Fair Board can apply for to help pay for those. And then some of the grants that the Fair Board can get on a regular basis can also help pay for those tanks. But they need to do something within, they may, maybe, they're, they're looking at replacing maybe a few this year and a few next year to get it so that they can get those ready to roll. And then I had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in Fergus Falls last, on, last month. It was the first official board meeting that I went to after I got elected to that position. It was really exciting. I got a tour of the facility. It's, it's actually in an old elementary school in Fergus Falls. So it was kind of interesting how I walked through the building and you could see how the elementary school was set up. But anyway, I learned a lot. They put me on the policy committee, so I read a bunch of policy the last couple of weeks, so it was pretty interesting. But that's all I have.
Thanks. I'm going to just touch on my briefly, I had Pelican River Watershed, and the main thing there, they did elect a new chair, is Rick Michelson, and the vice chair was Lori Holson. Phil Hanson is treasurer, Chris Jaskin remained as secretary. Kyle is working on a letter that we're going to submit to Pelican River from Becker County zoning on, more or less a MOU on duties and understandings where we might be overlapping to try to cut costs in shore-impact areas and so forth. So that'll probably be coming up, possibly at our next meeting to discuss.
Don't we currently have some, some agreements, like with cormorants, so if we're not doubling up on, on-
Cormorants, I think we do. Pelican River Watershed, no. So we want to be about, about on the same page as both of them, so. City of Detroit Lakes come up with a MOU or letter that, what they're going to cover. No sense, both entities permitting and inspecting, all the same thing, so Kyle's working on that, and I'll kind of monitor that as it comes along. I had Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste. They did finish a year meeting their goal of insuring fifty-five thousand tons of garbage, which Becker County, I believe, own twenty-two percent of that facility alone there, so. One thing that's going to impact us a little bit, the ash that's created by, from that, Otter Tail County is raising it from about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year to three-hundred-thousand, so it's quite a bit of ash that comes out of that. We're also looking at options of cleaning that up, removing all the metals, and working with county highway departments to incorporate that into road bed base, so. More, more not to come is fore and then. When Isaiah took place, I was elected chair of the board down there, and Tim Denny from Todd County was vice chair, so. I'll see. I think we covered everything else, so. Anything else to add?
The only thing I'd like to add is we did, through NRM, have a discussion with the surveyor, and when we talked about the, the state funding for, for section points, they are not allowing us to do the first-come-first-serve, you know, for private, so we have to put together a plan and either do that with our, our surveyor or decide how we want to move forward with that. But it's got to have a, we have to have a plan in place and, and go, and follow that plan to, for the grant, with a, with a grant application. We can't just say first-come-first-serve, so he's, he's tweaking that a little bit and coming back to us.
And we're probably talking about just doing township corners.
Yeah, we were thinking about that would be our first, first goal to-
Okay, anybody have any appointments? Move on, county administrator report, Pat.
Thank you, Chair. The only report item I have is we, our negotiation team has been meeting, we have set up bargaining negotiations to begin in February for all our bargaining units, and there's been some strategy discussion as well, and the team is, is going to be coming back to the board at a future meeting and go into closed session and discuss that. But we'd like to start in February, and almost all the bargaining units have responded. We've got one outstanding, but we expect to, to lock them down here for February. And I'll just continue with the agenda. On page twenty, twenty, on page twenty-one, we received a letter requesting the county board endorse a resolution to support hunting relating to wolves. And I know that material's in your packet, and we'd just be looking for some discussion and some direction for the board on that.
I guess I have had a few calls on this also, and I think I'm very supportive of coming over some type of resolution to get back to controlling them. I think people that hunt in the wolf area, areas, which I do some, our deer population is going downhill.
Yeah, I agree. And I know of several farmers in the area that have also had issues with wolves, you know, whether it's killing their calves or at least being among their livestock. So I think, I think it is time to do something as far as the population of them goes. I also could tell a difference in our deer population in our area, so I would agree.
And it's, it's big, healthy deer they're getting too. Some big bucks, they're, it's not, they're not taking the weaker ones there. And they're, they're just going to grow in numbers, and we're going to have more and more trouble with them if we don't do something with them.
And I believe they're, they're going into more, you know, residential area, I mean, it's getting closer and closer to residential. We're going to, this, I think this problem's going to keep expanding until we, we can get the state involved in, in doing some controlled hunting, and I think that's what it's asking. It's asking that we, that the US Congress return wolf management to the state of Minnesota, and I think that's, that's just totally reasonable. The state was doing a, a good job on it, I think, or at least adequate job, probably could even do more so, but at least it's something, and they recognize, and I think the state of Minnesota wants it and, and wants to help control that, so. We don't have a specific resolution, but I'll offer a motion to authorize the chair to sign a letter of support to ask the Senator Claude Bouchard to join up, join with us and, and ask the US Congress to return wolf management to the state of Minnesota, and put that in a form of a resolution with Becker County letterhead. It's my motion.
I'll second it.
Second one, Erica. Any further discussion? Hearing none, no. All in favor?
All right.
Close? Great, thanks.
I'll continue, Chair. Page twenty-three, this is a communication we reached from AMC, it went out to all county administrators, and it was relating to some discussion, that was an open forum with regards to the, the state flag, and it provides some guidelines for each county and how they might want to proceed. It indicates that it is required to be displayed at the state capitol and in courtrooms, but other bodies of government are not required. And the goal of putting it on the agenda was to get some direction from the board on what they would like to see, and, and they have any input on regards to how they want to proceed with the flag. We do have a few counties that have already kind of made their, some decisions. Some of our regional counties, I think that was included in the, the folder that was handed out, have made some decisions, but we're looking for some direction or some consensus from the board.
No, I kind of agree, I'd be in favor of sending some type of letter, resolution stating our opposition to changing our state flag. It seems like it's rural, rural versus metro on this issue, so.
Mr. Chair, on this flag deal, I mean, I chair the Becker County, you know, association and talking to a few, we would support you, that I think is ridiculous is what they're doing. Nothing wrong with that flag. I know the legislators won't be meeting till what, a couple of days? Whenever they start, but they got to-
March fifth.
March fifth is when they're going to meet, and I think our association would support what you're talking, and I don't know where the rest of the counties are, and it's going to be in committee, it's going to be a lot of discussion on what they're going to do down there, but there's gaining on support and keeping the wolf flag.
Thank you, Roger. When is Chairman of the Becker County Township Association?
I'm just, Mr. Chair, I, I agree, I'm just wondering how to frame it, because in this email, we've, it's been stated now that the cost isn't going, it's not going to cost us anything in the, any near future, because that we're not required to change over things, we're, we're not a state agency. So I, I'm just wondering how we, how we should, how we should frame that.
My, my concern would be right now or not, but who says they'll change, won't change legislation that's requires us, then it'll be costly.
What kind of involvement? I mean, I know that they put the design out for the whole state, but I'm, I'm, I guess I didn't really hear it until it was all done and over with. So I guess that would also be, if, if it needs to be changed, I think we need to have more involvement. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we should change it. I, I have no, no issues with our current flag, but I think that we didn't put enough, get enough input and thought from Minnesotans, especially in the rural area. So I would be in support of something.
There was quite a bit of publication on it where they called for designs, and they had, I looked at how many original designs, and moved it down to just a few, and then they finally picked one, so. Yeah, as far as counties who were not, weren't involved or asked our opinion at that time, so.
I guess that's what I, I would like, is there to have been more county input throughout the state, on whether it needs to change and what it should look like.
And we can sure enter our input right now.
The, the complaint I've heard is, you know, the old flag, our Minnesota, our, well, I think it's our current flag, Minnesota state flag, has a lot of history and, and there's a lot of representation in that flag, and the new flag is, is very bland. I mean, there's nothing that screams Minnesota on it at all. I mean, I, I, I don't know why you would go to a, a very bland flag from a, one that's got the history in it, so even, even if you were going to change it, you should have incorporated the history of the current flag into that and, and move, have some of that consideration. So that's, and then there's no, nothing that screams Minnesota on this flag, its design, it's, it's, I think the criteria that they set forward was, it was not good criteria to even consider it, so.
What's the issue with the board?
I don't know how to frame that, I don't know how to frame the, maybe, how we, how we should-
Well, we got a few template letters from some neighboring colonies and other counties of the state we can look at and-
But I think we have to decide that today. I mean, I think we need to decide now how we want, what we want to say in that template. We can't just, should it-
We should do something because a lot of people are calling me and they're, they are, they don't want it, and, and I don't want it either. I love our-
Are we going to, are we going to say we don't want, do we not want any new flag, or are we saying that we don't want this design of the new flag? I mean, that-
I like the old flag, I don't want a new flag.
I think most of us should retain our present flag.
The new flag will not be flown at Becker County.
I think one of the first ones that passed the resolution was Crow Wing County. I read that one, it was in the newspaper. We got a copy of that, and I pretty much agreed with what they had in there. We can-
What, can you, can you read it, or do you want to pass that over so we can-
You should have in the back, you should have in the back.
Oh, you had it in here.
And I think while it doesn't, it's not costing the county money as of now, it's still costing, it's still costing money.
Clay County said it would cost them fifty thousand dollars to change it up.
Yeah, but I, I think through this email though, we've recognized that they're not going to have to change those flags out, so they can, I mean, I, I would instruct us not to change flag out in our, behind our seal.
Eventually, we're not, the people value, we're not going to allow two different flags in the state, eventually we're going to have to change it.
Then we're not required to fly either, either flag. We're flying, we have it, we have it here, but we're not required to- We're flying, we have it, we have it here, but we're not required to have either one, the old one or the new one. We would just, we would just, we would just keep the old one up until, until future boards decide otherwise, I guess.
Well, I see, just comparing, Wadena pretty much mirrored Crow Wing Colony on their resolution.
Yeah, I, I, I would go with this resolution.
There's some good points on savetheflag.com.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to act on it today, so it's, I think we, I mean, I, I think we can.
I would be in support of mirroring something along Crow Wing.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to mirror or make similar, a resolution to Crow Wing County's resolution for the, for the state flag.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chair, could we, could you word that to authorize the board chair to, to sign on behalf of Becker County a, a resolution stating the opposition to redesign the state flag and seal similar to Crow Wing? Is that?
Yeah.
That's what you're intending?
Yes, correct.
Any other discussion?
That would your.
Hearing none, all in vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Capital Improvement Plan, Nicole's going to come up and hand a document out to you, but while she's doing that, I would just reference you to page twenty-four of your Statute four seven five five two one allows for a government unit that it may adopt a capital improvement plan. We're not bringing something for you to adopt right now, but we're bringing you a composite of the current expenditures that we have that would go into a potential capital improvement plan since when year 2024. If you would do a capital improvement plan, as you could see from the, the dates there, this would start at 2025. And if you look at the, page twenty-four, it just outlines some of the requirements that are built into the plan. All these have been built into this plan here, and all the department heads have been able to contribute. Not all the department heads are in here. There are some department heads that do not have a capital investment that's greater than 5,000, but most are in there. And the value that we, that we see in doing a five-year plan is it would be reviewed biannually by the board. There'd be a public hearing that would go with it. You would create a capital fund, and so the levies that are going in the operating fund for each department would now go into what would be a capital fund. And as equipment is sold, the money would go back into the capital fund. So much of the levying would just transfer to a capital fund. And the reason we wanted to bring it to you now and get some direction is, in a few months, we're going to start the budget development for 2025, and we'd want to have some direction by then to see if the board is supportive of this. It did go to the finance committee, and there seemed to be support for it. And we'd just be interested in answering any questions that you have. I, I think if you recall, we did a benchmarking, about 75% of the counties do a capital improvement plan in the state of Minnesota, so it's, we only think is a best practice approach. And, and I think there's just some issues that can come up, and this is no reflection on the departments, but we had a situation in the sheriff's office where we had vehicles that they had ordered, but they didn't get delivered because of the supply chain, they weren't built. But it was budgeted in their operating budget for that particular year. In a capital improvement plan, that money would move. They could come back to the board and say, well, they'd like to move those monies to the next year. Now, operating budget ends at the end of the year. And, now, that money is still there, but, you know, when you have money left in your operating budget, there's a tendency to spend it, you know, if you're not spending it for that year. So it does put things on notice. It, it asks our department heads to think five years into the future and plan accordingly. And we've had some situations where we've had some surprises with boiler systems, things like that, and those situations, we would have a life for the boiler system, we'd put it in the plan. The hope is, is we could maybe get a year, another year out of the boiler system, but at least we're planning for it and planning how to fund it. And, and I just guess I'd be curious to see if the board has any other questions on that.
Well, the comment we discussed with Dave and Highway, and I'm very much in favor of it. I guess I did it for years with Highway, and it worked out great. You got a five-year plan, and I think this really would have helped the sheriff's department in their planning also. One thing, it gives us an overlook of five years of what departments are looking at.
I'm very much in favor of it, too, and it's just smart, it's just good business. I have to do it in my business. I have to look ahead and see what I need, and to, you know, I only have so much money to operate on, and it's got to go in certain places. And so I, I think it would, it's a very good idea, and we should, we should do it.
Is this the same situation as Human Services also had a vehicle that they wanted to get? And so, so in that situation, that money would have been there in the capital improvement fund?
Yep.
Okay.
Instead of it being in the regular budget and then not using it going back.
Oh, fleet vehicles are on here.
Well, I mean, this is a, this is an official plan, but we thought we'd try to make it as real and up as soon as we could.
Oh, sure, yep.
And so we did incorporate fleet vehicle investments throughout each year.
We got the same thing with the Cordeos vehicles, too, and they collected and.
Well, and I just, I just know Human Services has the, you know, they have the one vehicle that's been long overdue to be replaced and released, likely probably not very safe to drive anymore. So I would be in support of.
Just need a consensus?
Looking into it.
Just looking for feedback. We wouldn't start it till this summer, but if there's any reservations or any more research, we'll certainly do it. But we do think it's a best practice, and, and I don't think we need a motion now, but I think some consensus would be helpful to, because we'll start taking this more seriously with department head meetings and also ramp it up as we approach the preliminary budget cycle for 2025.
I think we, I think committees should review it and, and make sure they got everything on there and, and bring it.
Well, I think, yeah, that will be rolled out for them to review. This is, this is just more an examples of things, but we just need a consensus to kind of move forward with that type of planning.
I agree.
I think we've done that in the past. We've already said that we should move forward, so.
Okay.
Think it's a.
Thank you.
Our next one, Nicole's going to come up here on page twenty-six on the centralized, and you do have some staff here as well? They can certainly come up if they would like to. Page twenty-six, centralized accounting. We had, we discussed this over at the Cordeos Committee, but also the Finance Committee as well. And again, we, I think at this part, we're just looking to collectively get, provide information to the board. If you look at page twenty-six, there's a centralized accounting resolution from 2013, and under the be it resolved, it indicates that the county auditor, county administrator can work together to move forward with processes relating to this position. We have a couple thoughts, and they're, and they're really different thoughts. One is, and, and we've had quite a bit of meetings with, with our county auditor and treasurer on this as well, and there's some differing opinion on it, and that's why it's important for the board to weigh in on it. But there's really two items. One is the benefits of productivity for staff to be within the departments that they serve as accountants, which, when I read this, it's something that I felt as an administrator I could move on, but because it's really a collaborative between the auditor and treasurer, I said, well, I think I'll just bring it to the board because Mary had some thoughts as well on this. And, and the second item is really the financial management unit. And the benchmarking that we've done and the communication that we've had with CLA or auditor, really, the best practice approach, we're not seeing anything different, is for the financial management unit to be under administration. And that's really because the budget development wing and the financial management wing is in a different department than the accounts payable and accounts receivable wing. And if you, and we've done the benchmarking on this, what, what you see in the auditor's office is really core areas of accounts payable and receivable and elections. And so we do think it was worthy of, of bringing this up for discussion with the board to see if you'd be supportive of this. I wasn't here for this in 2013, but I, I think I've got a good history lesson from Christian Nelson on what, what took place there and what they were trying to accomplish. And we do see that the best practice approach would be to move our designated accountants to the departments that they serve. That's one decision. You could make that separately from the central accounting, but we also see moving the financial unit under administration also is a best practice.
Nicole, you and your staff have any comments?
I think, you know, location is a very important part of the accountant's jobs, for sure, specializing in highway and human services. I do feel it's equally as important to kind of look at that benchmarking and see what other counties are doing. And also, I think it'd be, you know, a good move for the accounting unit to, or the finance unit to move under administration, if you'd be willing to consider that.
So what are you looking, just a direction or?
Well, you can, you can do a couple things here. You could approve as, as requested, but I, I really think it's important for Mary to have something to say on this because we haven't agreed on this, and I think that's important for you to hear the honor of her.
Mr. Chair, question I had right away, Mary, you can certainly come up, was, were we, were we creating another department head if we did this? That was my question at the forehouse.
Yeah, that's not what we recommend. We would recommend the financial manager be no different than other managers we have under administration, like veteran services manager and things like that.
Okay, the, in my opinion, the resolution was created basically to determine where, oh, it's not working.
Yeah.
Yes.
A little closer to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the resolution originally was created so there would be a collaboration between administration and the auditor treasurer to determine where the staff would sit. We have come to an agreement. The accountants can go back to their departments. Where I object and don't think we've had time to look into this matter is moving a third of my department under administration. I think, in my opinion, it should be tabled until we have additional time to look at reorganizing, because that's basically what we're asking, he's asking, is to reorganize the auditor treasurer's office.
Yeah, and I can respond. The, and look at Mary and I've met about this for many months, and so this is not a surprise to Mary that this was coming, and we did take it through the committees. Again, from a best practice standpoint, maybe you would like time to review all the data, because we'd be happy to provide that on whatever county does. The county administrative form of government, that's where the financial unit is, it's under the administrator. There's just no exception to that. Where there is, where the auditor has a much, a much greater role is in the county coordinator forms of government. And, and so that, so that's important to differentiate between the two. I think the other thing, the other benefits that we discussed, and I think Mary does share in the benefits, is there's quite a bit of space up there on that other side of the wall. And one of the major things that the auditor treasurer's office does is elections and programming equipment, and they're doing a lot of going down to the basement and then bringing the equipment up. All that equipment could stay on that level in that department, and I think there is a role for some other personnel to be able to have a, have a spot that's away from customer service where they don't play a role. The current staff, that's the, the accountants, don't have a direct role in the auditor treasurer's office. They're on the other side of the wall, they're there, but they, they're, they're distinctive of what the core functions of auditor treasurer's office is. So I have no concern if this board wants to get all that data and review what we've already reviewed and what our CLA auditor has said. And if the board is supportive of moving those individuals now, that certainly will provide an immediate benefit. But we're all, we're all fine with the data. Let's review the data, we've reviewed it, but if the board would like to go through that, and we'll take it through the committees again, like we did before, we could certainly do that. But CLA has certainly indicated older customers, this is how it's done. My experience and the benchmarking I've done, I can't find a administrator form of government that it's done differently.
We have discussed this in the highway as far as that committee and agreed with.
And it was, I don't know if it was discussed with Human Services Committee, was it, Nicole? It was certainly discussed with the department head, department heads involved.
It was not discussed in the committee, no.
And normally, we were thinking that we needed to do that movie, but we certainly did talk with the department heads, and they do see a real benefit having the accountant closer by.
I guess for me, I would, I, I would feel more comfortable understanding it better myself, you know, whether it's understanding why we, why we, you know, chose in 2013 to, there was obviously a reason that we decided to do centralized accounting, and then just the, you know, reviewing the information that, that we've been given about what other counties are doing.
Mr. Chairman, would this be taking the financial duties away from the auditor treasurer's office and moving it to a new department? Is that what you're?
Darren, I appreciate the comment, but keep this between staff and the board here.
Well, that is also my concern, because we still have core duties that are the financial statement and the audits, which are required to be done by the auditor. And now we're moving the staff under the administrator. That is why I'm asking for this to be tabled, because I do think there are a lot of specifics that need to be looked into.
What I would say to that is certainly the county auditor is the financial person of record, clearly. As far as audits, you know, I, I think the statutes don't reflect what you said there, Mary. Certainly audits go across every, every department, and, and, at least my experience and the benchmarking that I've done is it, it comes out of administration. But I, again, I, I think it is a good idea to make sure we get all the information and the history behind it. I think that's just fine. And, and take the time it takes for the board to make a thoughtful decision, but would the board support the, the movement of those individuals, which I think Mary also is supporting? Right. I would support moving Angie and Jessica to their building or to Highway and to Human Services, because Mary's in support of that. I think that's a good plan.
Yeah, I would support that.
And then I would also support Nicole maybe moving to Human Services as her main stake, because she has six employees that she can supervise over there.
And I agree.
And then we can come up with further info and discuss it later?
Yep.
And I think the, the question that Darren raised, too, is, I mean, I, we have to understand how that, how that's going to, how that working relationship can, can still be there, and I think that's the key. But I do know that we've discussed the absence of the accountant at Highway is, is not, is not good. I mean, it's, there's so much interaction with, with, with those, and it helps cover, cover the front at, at times, too. So it, that is, I fully support the, the transition to move. I think we need to work through the inter-office relationships and how that will, how that will continue to function properly, so. But I think, I think with that, we can, we're moving forward with the transition of space then at this time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, Jessica, for your, your work and input on this.
I think consensus, I think is fine. I don't think we need a motion for that, but, but again, I just wanted to ask the chair that, and if you're fine with that, okay.
Consensus to move the staff around.
And the final one that I have under here is the classification compensation study, page twenty-seven. We're bringing Tess on right now, and of course, Carrie will be here to answer some questions. Just give us a moment as we find her.
Could we take Audrey Craig where we're getting her?
Absolutely, that's a great suggestion, yeah. Mary, can you do it?
Do things long a little bit?
The first item that I have is the license list.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve zero two two four one A, Carsonville Firefighters' raffle.
What's my name, Eric, second?
I'll second that.
David, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Carrie.
Second is Resolution two twenty-four one B, Cormart Lions Raffle, August seventeenth, at Cormart Community Center.
No, I'll make a motion to approve one B.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie.
The next item I have is a three-two off-sale renewal and a wine and strong beer on-sale renewal for Jolly Fisherman Resort and Buellow in Round Lake Township.
I'll make a motion to approve.
What's my name, Erica, second?
I'll second. Carrie, second.
It's faster. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Carrie.
The next item we have is we're requesting to set a public hearing on March fifth at nine AM to take public comment on the new off-sale liquor license, intoxicating liquor license application for Swanee's Pub in Cormart Township.
Need a motion or something to?
We, the board actually has to. We, the board actually has to confirm so we can publish.
Okay. A motion to?
I'll make a mo, motion to set the public hearing for March 5th at 9:00 a.m.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, Carrie.
Thank you.
So Chair, we've put communications to her, she's not online yet, I guess the direction I would give is you could continue on with other items, there's a break coming up here.
There she is.
I am online, Kat, I'm on the phone.
Ah, that's why we didn't see you, very good, very good, Tessa, all right, excellent. All right, well, it's your show, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Board, Chair, and Commissioners. Before you is the classification appeal, basically stating the appeals that we, or the classifications that I had set based on the evaluations, the appeals that were received. Once I received them, I made my recommendation, I talked with the project team and went over those appeals, and you can see my recommendations for the appeals after reevaluating the appeal and additional information that was set. And I will just note that some are not really a classification appeal, but they're a reorg structure, meaning that they want to create a career ladder or change who reports to who, and once that's approved by the board, I'm fine with reclassing it, but right now I only look at the positions and not where people are going, so I want to make sure that that's clear, these classifications are on the job descriptions that are currently in place, and if there's any changes, I think those should go through the proper committees and board, and I tried to designate those recommendations as well. So I could go through each DDA recommendation, or I can just take questions from you all.
I think just field questions or?
Yeah, I don't think we need to go through each one.
I read through them all.
My que, my question regarding the career ladder, when you, there, there was a one that talked about needing a degree and then years of experience, or entry level and then a degree and years of experience, how does that work as you're going through the steps? So if you would come in at an associate degree with three years of experience, and then once you get three more years of experience, do you then move to the next, because then you're at associate degree in six years? So that, that was just confusing.
Yep, that's a, that's a great question. So typically, your entry level will be at one grade, let's just say a grade three, and then like the next one would be at a grade four. So if you came in at that level, got the degree or years of education, you would move to that next grade, closest step. What it does is it allows you to grow people within the organization as they grow and are more competent, have higher skills, knowledge, and experience. It also allows you, when you open up that position, you can increase your applicant pool, because you could take an entry level person or someone that has more experience, but then pay them at that experienced level. So it's kind of for retention and recruitment. Does that answer your question?
So they, so they wouldn't move to a different grade as they get, got experience? That's where they would come in?
Yeah, if they were to come in, let's just say, if they came in at a grade five, that's where they, their position is currently classified. If you created a career ladder, once they, if they, it was a degree or years of experience, they have the ability to move to the next grade in that career ladder, if they're in good standing performance, if they're willing to do those additional duties and have the skills and competencies needed for that. So then they would move to that, if, in this case, like a grade six, if that were the next career ladder.
Any other questions?
This is a little bit more, can you explain in future now, as we set this, how, what is the appeal process, or how, if, if an employee wants to appeal in the future, or, you know, even doesn't agree with this? We can al, it, my understanding, we can always appeal, it goes through our, our HR, and then it goes directly to you, and you, and you and your team review that? Is that?
Sure, yeah, so typically you would have like, a, a department head could, could do one of two things, they could say, we have a reclassification request, because this job has changed significantly, or we need to change it in order to, you know, meet the needs of a retirement or an opening. So that would be like a reclassification request. And then the other piece would be kind of, to your point, to say, hey, you know, my job has really changed, and I want to be looked at, I would say it's still a reclassification like request, and then it would, you fill out a document kind of stating what has changed, you know what I mean, and highlighting what maybe needs to warrant another review, or specifically in the job description, then send it to HR, I could review it, and then kind of, I would present a memo to, to the board to say, hey, I looked at this job description, I agree with a classification change of X based on the, you know, increased accountability, impact on end results, or something that it, that it designates, that I can prove that has changed and warrants that review.
Okay, there's no, there's no county review, there's no county review that directs a positive, a yes or no direction, is that correct to say?
I'm not sure on your question.
Well, there's no, well, does the county prescreen any, or does the county say we want this changed, I mean, or do we have any recommendation in that, when it gets to you, and who would have that?
Yeah, I mean, so if an employee were to do it, their supervisor has to sign it, so it has to come from the supervisor, and I would say it should come from the department head too, so that would kind of be the recommendation, hey, we want to look at this. I would then look at the classification based on the job description, the, you know, change or warrants, and I mean, also look at kind of market data to see kind of where the market values that position as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Could I, could I ask a question, Chair, just of Tessa? Tessa, this is Pat. So the, you know, we've, we've got many years on abandoned grade system, and this has been somewhat of a shock, I expect to a lot of people, because it's a whole new system. How aggressive if the board wanted to be, and I just want to make sure they hear this from you, how aggressive can the board be in reevaluating wage tables? Can they do that annually, as opposed to, I think a best practice might be every three or to five years? And also, how aggressive can they be with job description updates? And what would you, what are your thoughts on that?
Sure, yep, that's a great question. So, I mean, textbooks would say you should look at your market every three to five years. I would say in a, where we are right now, with wages being so competitive, labor shortage, I would suggest more frequently. You know, we offer a program, and I'm not saying you have to use it, but we offer an ongoing maintenance program, and that basically says, we'll look at the market for all positions every year, and then we review a third of your job descriptions, you know, a third one year, a third the next, and the next. And what that allows, I think, is, I always say that it's equivalent to your pavement improvement plan, so that the highway department looks at the road surface every year and does crack filling, steel coating, all of those necessary things to maintain that road, while your employees are your greatest asset, and, but they're the biggest part of your budget. So I think it's better to look at it more frequently and make minimal changes as the market is changing and the board's desire, pay philosophy, all of those, so you don't have this huge wage gap where you've waited and now you have to make up for that. And we're typically seeing that will also help then with like COLA adjustments, and also, it does help employees know that their job description's going to be reviewed more frequently, and it can also help with union negotiations.
Tessa, is this appropriate to ask about a specific, a specific?
Position?
Position that you, that you reviewed on appeal?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if the board doesn't agree with my recommendations, then that's, that's kind of why we're here, because once the board says, if we agree with these, it's kind of like, okay, let's take a breath, let's move forward, then we'll do kind of the implementation of the pay grid. So I think this is what employees are waiting for, so if the board is not comfortable, one of my recommendations, this would be the place to talk about that.
The one that's, the one that kind of stands out to me is, because of the past grade, or abandoned grade, and now it seems to be dipping a little, is the land use director was a D-62, so it's now in, it's, it's a class 14, or a, so that seemed, that seemed to go down in, in that scale. So that was a, that was D-62, and above, now above it, there's a C-6, a C-52, which is a lower, and that's at a grade higher. Just, just reviewing that one.
Sure.
Environmental has expanded so much and recycling, and then with the partnership with the Prairie Lakes, and the, I'm just curious if, if, how you reviewed that, and if that's?
Yep, um, yeah, I, I reviewed it, I actually talked to the individual, he had some other concerns. It is one of those positions that right now is currently above, like where your market is, but it is one of those positions that it encompasses so much with solid waste, forestry, environmental services, and parks. I believe internally, it's graded where it is, and I know that maybe the banding before was different, again, it's not based on that, but if the board feels like, you know what, its impact on results is more equivalent to that, you know, the next grade, so like a grade 15, who would also be, um, like chief deputy county assessor, then I could support that on the impact on end results, but I could, I look at that job description, the scope of services, and the people that they're servicing are really managing those programs. So in my evaluation, but again, I don't know it as well as everyone else, and when I talked with the group, I felt that it was properly internally, like when you look at the whole county, but if the board says, you know what, we know, we really think that its impact on results is that equivalent, although it has many services and many people managing those services under that land use director, then I definitely could review that and come back with the board with a recommendation. Again, this process, I know, has been really long and painful for everyone, and I apologize for that. I'm looking at it just from the internal, you know, kind of perspective and based on the PAQ, so I would be happy to look at that one again, if that's the board's desire.
Well, to me, to me, I can, and I know this is where we get into trouble, when you look at other jobs, and where it lands, with the, the duties of the assessor, in my opinion, are, are not, I mean, the land use directors over a lot of departments, and, so I, I, I would like to, just, just look at that and see where that lands.
Well, then I would, yep, I, yeah, I would take, say, if the board's agreement in the other ones, please go ahead and cha, and approve those, so that people kind of are sitting, because that's like the anxiety right now, and I'm more than happy to look at that one again and kind of go through a more, you know, on my process, and then I can listen to other people, like the board, if they have specific concerns about that, and then come back to the board for that one.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion to accept this with the one, however, review of land use?
Yep, I'll, I'll move to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Richard, to move forward with, was presented with one review. Further discussion?
I, I'm just, there's, there's some other, I think, I think, I think the other one, I think we, that I have a concern with, would be handled with the, with the reclass structures. I, I think when we look at the reclassing of, of H, of, of finance and, and the financial end of it, I, I, there's some concerns with the flow from auditor treasurer all the way through the courthouse here on, on documents and flowage and the financials, I, but I think we're going to have to kind of look at how we move forward with that, and how material flows within the courthouse to, to review, to review that one, the ones I'm thinking of. So maybe a reclass, if we can, when we figure those things out, we can look at reclass change instead of today's change.
Yeah, no, I agree with that one, I mean, they had appeals, and I just said right now, the jobs are kind of where they are, and it looks different, I know, than it did in the past, but, you know, having some of those duties and responsibilities, I believe they are correct for now, but again, if you decide to reorg and change reports to who and some of those, that's all going to impact the classification, so anytime you do that, please let me know, and we'll go through that whole, like, department, how it will structure, what it will look like, as well as some of the other ones that we identified as maybe a future reorg or, and/or career ladder building.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, Carrie. Pat, do we have, we got these?
Right, yeah, and before we get to that, Chair, could I just ask the board about the concept of being aggressive on the wage table reviews? Do you ever give some thought to that, or do you want a proposal from HR and, and the consultant on reviewing those every year, as opposed to waiting three years?
Probably.
I think, I think.
The first year, they could be reviewed, once we implement this and get it going, and just see.
I don't, I mean, it's up to you, otherwise, our standard, as she has indicated, is like three to, three to five years, and?
I think Bob Burkin even recommended that, that we work through, work through a fourth, you know, so not every, every three years, every, every, take a fourth of this and review every year, a fourth of them, and then on the fifth year, we would move into another study. So I think that would be kind of my recommendation, not, not do it three years, move it out another year, and then, and then do the studies every five years, rather than?
And with that, they, there's also recommendation for COLAs, like, right, that, that was, I understood that correct?
Yeah, well, I want to, Tessa, to answer that, is if there was an annual review of tables, could you, could you answer that to Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. If we like, did like an ongoing maintenance, and you guys can kind of decide how you want it to look, typically, we say three years, because then when you go into your new, your union negotiation, you have fresh market data, and all jobs have been reviewed. That's why we do the three-year, because that's typically a union contract, is three years, but we have some that do four, we have some that do, you know, different, so that can be definitely talked about. To your question, though, we would look at the market every year and those COLA adjustments to help guide you on maintaining what you have and the pay philosophy set by the board.
And then getting back to the costs, Tessa, we're looking at the cost options, you had reviewed that at the last board meeting with the board, and we, we did work with staff, the auditor treasurer's office and deputy auditor treasurer on, on costs, I think you have those, do you have those documents before you?
We have, no, but we, only John and I do, because we got them yesterday.
Oh, okay, well, apologies, yeah, we, we, I guess the question is, is those are options that were also discussed at the previous board meeting, but we actually have assigned numbers to them, and?
I think, I mean, for me, I would rather review them before we?
If you'd like to wait, that's fine, I, I just, yeah, I just, I wanted to come?
I would, I would just, I would just add, I would also agree to wait, because now that you've reclassified, I'll put the new jobs in their classification, that will change those numbers slightly, but then the board will have exact?
Perfect.
Numbers. I think the big thing was to meet with finance, to know what they budgeted, and of my recommendation, if we have a gap to fill, how do we fill that? So I would be in support of holding off, so I can redo it with the new classifications to have a, an even tighter look at what it will cost.
We can bring that up in the following minutes. Thanks, Tessa.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Chair, why don't we go through your stuff, quick? You got a, you got a break scheduled there, you know, you, I just didn't know how they, everyone else was doing something.
I've been thinking about it.
Maybe after, Chair.
You're doing very good, where are you parked?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the first item I have today is Resolution 02241D, which is approval to appoint a deputy director for emergency management, and under Minnesota statute 12.25, it does say that every county must have a director and one or more assistant directors. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve 1D.
Motion by Dave, a second.
A second.
Erica, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, Carrie.
And for the record, this will be Lieutenant Luke Swery as the deputy director. in Ramsey County, uh, because of the absence of a current coroner for Becker County.
That I signed here a couple of weeks ago to get it, because there's a lot of things being held up, you didn't have a coroner on staff.
Do you need a motion to extend it?
No.
I think it's just discussion.
Just discussion, okay.
Well, I think we do want authorization. This is a contract that we signed ahead of bringing to the board because of the situation, so I would, I would like to see the board approve it.
I'll make a motion to extend the contract.
Motion by Erica, second.
I'll second. You want the word ratify the contract?
Ratify.
Is ratify the original with the extension.
With the amendment.
With the amendment number one.
Or ratify the amendment with, because of predating.
Okay, got it up there. Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Karen.
Item three is a purchase request for replacement of our command post radio. Uh, the current one we have does not have encryption capability. We would like to move forward with one for encryption capabilities, uh, for example, when the SWAT team is used. That is a cost of six thousand three fifty-five forty-four.
Make a motion to approve. Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
And item four is a personal request for temporary deputies. Uh, first and foremost is for boat and water deputies, which we, uh, get every year to help with our boat and water, uh, division. This will be paid for by the boat and water grant. And also just more of an update, uh, I will have another vacancy coming up in the near future and it was, it was discussed at our committee meeting about possibly getting emergency temporary hires for those positions if we do not have applicants for those positions. So, um, I guess I'm looking for an approval for the boat and water deputies for now.
Motion for the temporary boat and water deputies?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the hire temporary deputies for boat and water.
Have a second?
My second.
Erica, further discussion?
Just to point out that this is, uh, the temporaries for boat and water, it's not the temporaries for, um, supplementing.
Yep.
Correct.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Karen.
It was stated earlier that that was on the agenda, but that's not, we're just taking those, we're hiring those because of the short within budget.
Correct. Thank you.
Thanks. Take a five-minute break here, we're supposed to be back on...
We're back in session again. Please be seated. Jim, Highway. Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Highway has one item for your consideration, a purchase request to upgrade the lighting at a Rose Sage shop. We went out for two quotes. The low quote coming in from Cummins Electric for $4,391. We're recommending approval to Cummins Electric.
I have a question. I forgot my notes, but there wasn't quite, I know the low quote didn't have anything to do with the emergency light, exit lighting replacement on it, unless I missed it.
Those are the three wall packs.
Two wall packs?
No, they had three wall packs in there.
Okay.
Yep.
And all the number lights were the same?
Yep.
Number lights?
Yep.
Okay.
So, and then also, to your question on rebates, Great River Energy does not have any, or Mantrap does not have any rebates, so.
Thanks for checking. Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Richard to approve. I'll second that. Through discussion, hearing then, all in favor say aye.
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 Posed?
Urged.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Kyle, there you are.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Planning Commission recommendations, the first one being from 12/20/2023, a request from Supas requesting a conditional use permit for Shoreland Conservation Subdivision consisting of 16 units. Recommendation was to approve with findings.
If this is just for the conditional use, then the actual development goes to Lakeview Township?
That is correct.
The subdivision, I mean.
Yep.
Any, I think we've presented before, or I guess I can ask if there's any questions, or the applicant have anything to say? Mark?
Kyle's got it covered for us. We have our team here. If you have questions, we can answer them every minute.
Okay.
One question that I had was, and I know, I know we had, had that additional information that you provided yesterday about the bluff. Did that include boring what was recommended?
No.
By the, it wasn't recommended, it was suggested?
Right, so that, those are just declarations for the development itself.
Okay.
But no, they didn't have any conditions of boring in there.
Just suggestion?
Right, so you got the observation from Bronn InterTech though as well, Ezra?
The one that you sent yesterday?
Right, there should have been two separate emails, yeah.
Yep.
Basically Bronn InterTech didn't think there was a need for boring?
We have him here.
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Ezra Ballinger. I'm with Bronn InterTech Corporation, soils engineering. I have been soils engineer for 18 years, give or take, done a lot of work in the lakes area as well as elsewhere around the upper Midwest. I walked the site. That was our scope, was to walk the site and look for visually apparent concerns that we have a slope stability condition at this point. I do not see any indication that there is something actively moving or on the verge of moving, you know, based on, you know, what we're able to see with that. At this point, no, no discussion of further borings has been, been, you know, presented to me or asked of me. At this point, it's, it was visual and based on what I'm seeing, I don't have concerns with building based on the visual condition as well as what I've looked at on the plan that Apex has put together and sent over to me.
Okay.
You said building, but at what, at what distance is that? I haven't been on the site, so.
The plan is, all the, all the set, minimum setback right now is 35 feet from the bluff. My biggest.
Thirty or 35? That's it?
I believe it's at 30.
I think it's at 30.
Thirty is the setback, but most of the stuff that we mentioned.
It's 35, okay.
Yeah. John Alisson with Apex Engineering Group, assisting the developer with the grading plan and stormwater management plan. The minimum setback per ordinance is 30 feet. We have cited each individual lot. The closest building that we have cited right now is 35 feet. So we have, we have, we're beyond the minimum requirement of that 30 that we've got cited.
Yeah.
Do you see if there's, I talked to Scott a little bit and said that he mentioned that, but do you feel that irrigation, any irrigation would harm that, or you want to limit that, or would that be just normal use?
So I wouldn't be concerned about irrigation as long as the slopes are graded like they are to drain back from the face. You know, I don't want, I think it's a, it's a bad idea in general to have your irrigation water flow down the face of that slope. So the way the grading plan is currently set up, it's, everything is draining back away from the face, and so the only water getting on the face before or after the development is water that falls directly on it right now from the, from the sky. So it's not a changed condition in that, but that is, you know, the one, one thing I recommend is make sure you don't have water that will drain over that face from the development.
I know one concern from Pelican River watershed was the Conservation District included everything down to the lake, that lot that was just purchased by Supas. So nothing can ever happen to that. It's all included in that district, Conservation District. Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to concur?
Do we have to ask if there's anybody here?
Pardon?
Do we have to ask if there's anybody here for?
Oh, is anybody here that wants to speak? Pam?
Well, I think you all know our concerns, so. We don't have anything to say to that question, so we find our, we ask, so. We want to be good neighbors, Mark. We don't want to confuse with anybody, but I think if it was your house too, you'd have concerns, right? So I really don't.
Okay, thanks. Where's this?
Well, I think my concerns were water flowing over that bluff, and if that's, I mean, can, that's included in the plan and 35-foot setback, that's included in the plan. So if we concur with the plan, that will put those restrictions on it. Is that correct?
Yep.
And my concern was addressed with the soil, so.
Yeah.
Need a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the request of conditional use permit for Shoreland Conservation Subdivision consisting of 16 units.
I will second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave.
Mr. Chair, could I, and would you ask, would you, would you include the, as a developer's plan, so those restrictions would be on? As presented.
As presented, yes.
Yes, agreed.
Other discussion? Hearing then, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Urged.
The second item for your consideration, Planning Commission recommendation for removal of a Planning Commission member for misconduct, basis were in the meetings provided to you from 1-924.
Okay, Steve, you, come up and speak. Allow you five, five minutes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Board, my name is Steve Windo. I'm on the Planning Commission, at least up to this point, and they have requested to remove me for misconduct. And I guess I'm going to try and emphasize the main points here. You do have a letter that is sent to Brian McDonald. He said he was passing, passed that out to everybody, and I'll be talking off on this. As far as misconduct definition, it's usually something that's intentional. It can deal with profanity. It used some, used at somebody in a meeting. It can be up to and including, you know, fraud, theft, material like that. As far as the handling of my situation, time and how this happened is a problem for me. They went back to, a group of people went back to what happened in May and what I talked about refer, at the pig lot, not feed lot issue. And there wasn't a problem after that. Nobody approached me for any issues that I was bringing up or anything. There was some questions about PCA, trying to separate what the county does versus what PCA does. And I wasn't aware of how that's handled, and over time I learned that PCA handles mostly the environmental part of this. I thought the county was involved in that, and I learned that, well, that's not the case. And so I stayed away from that. As far as due process goes, I didn't know anything that was being discussed or talked about until the January meeting where it was brought up and that I was being recommended to be removed. The first time I saw this was in the paper in December, or yeah, I think it was December, and somebody else had to tell me that there was something in the paper where they were going to remove somebody. And I didn't know anything about it. And so the next, on Monday, I called Pat, I called Erica, and it turns out it was me. And so as far as due process, I wasn't informed of anything that I was really doing wrong that would rise to a level of misconduct. There were some questions about how I ask questions, and I needed to speed up and hurry up my questioning, and it was about my technique and how I do that. And I've done that. I've improved on that, and I've, yeah. But that's the only thing that was at that time. One of the issues dealt with, there was a discussion with, Dave Blumseth, the Chair of the Planning Commission, and myself about trust, and we were told, as you know in the reading there, we were told the wrong thing about what the Planning Commission could do to extend the time period for, and for a cup application. And we found out, well, we were told that night that we couldn't extend it. We had to make a decision that night on this cup, either deny it or approve it. And so during the week, I asked the attorney about this, and he said that, yes, we did have the authority to extend the time period of which we could considerate the cup. So we could have moved it beyond 60 days that night, but we weren't told that. We were told the opposite. And this was confirmed by the attorney, Brian Mc, Brian McDonald, sorry, that speech thing is kicking up here. So, let's see, trying to hurry up here if I can. As far as what I brought to the board meeting, I appeared at the board meeting based upon what happened in the Planning Commission meeting just before the board meeting. And we went from that meeting to the board meeting, and I brought the new points up, and I waited until the end of the meeting before I commented. And the points I was trying to bring up that were given did not deal with me not supporting the Planning Commission decision. That was done, that was over. But what I did discover in the meantime were two things that I felt the board should know about in order to make a good decision. And one of them was just the idea that we were told the wrong information. The second one was, the conservation officer, I went to him and asked him about the issue with the shooting and the gun club towards the buildings and parking lot area where this feed lot is. And he said, even though it might be legal for the hunters to be shooting in that direction, it comes down to what's safe. And he said that if, basically, if you're dropping shotgun pellets on cars or where people are operating, he would find that as a safety issue and, and the ability of the people that own the hunt club to hunt. Now, that affected nine different families. They would have to move farther down the lake. It would take away a lot of the land that they used for hunting, is what he said, and based on what he said. If they wouldn't cooperate, then he could write a ticket, you know, that type of thing. And so that was the safety issue that I felt you should know. And it had nothing to do with trying to change the vote or speaking against what the Planning Commission supported. And I think that's what they thought I was doing. And what, based on the video and the information that I provided to you, I provided new information, and that's all that was about. The county attorney confirmed that the misconduct issue seemed to be more of a personal issue and a personal attack on me rather than a misconduct type of an issue. And that was what he stated at the beginning of the hearing, and that's what he basically said at the end of the hearing. He didn't see where anything that I was doing rose to the level of misconduct. And, you know, I think that's a pretty important comment for him to make. There's a Zern letter. I think you have a copy of a letter from Mr. Zern, and he, he said that I turned a half-hour meeting into a three-hour meeting. And it's just an example of how miss, misinterpretation or misinformation, that's the word, for you guys to hear can lead a discussion in the wrong direction. There were two other cup meetings that night. There were three lawyers that spoke that night. There were many people in the meeting that had questions that came up and had to be answered. There was a lot of stuff happened during that meeting. And he tried to lay the responsibility of me of turning a 30-minute meeting into three hours. And that, that's not true. I think what it is with the Planning Commission is that they're kind of frustrated or annoyed that I do my research. I do look for information. I go out and I visit and I talk to people. I do a real thorough job. And I think that's the job that the county expects people in the Planning Commission to do, and that annoys them. And, and so they went back, a few people on the Planning Commission, not everybody, they went back to something that happened in May and tried to make it big enough so I would get removed, tried to turn it into misconduct. It wasn't misconduct back then. Nobody approached me, nobody talked to me about anything I said at that point. But then all of a sudden in December and January, it's a big, it's a big deal. And so it's like they were searching for something to get rid of me because I do, I think, a really good job for the, for the county. And I'm just about done here. I know John just gave me basically five minutes.
This is important.
What you have there, Steve?
Pardon?
Go ahead and finish up.
I, I can't hear.
Finish up. Go ahead.
Okay. As far as, a couple of comments here today that I, I have my own agenda, was, that a comment was made, I'm doing what's good for the county. I do the research, I do the talking to people. I'm doing that. Whether I talk to people before the Planning Commission meeting, or I discover something after the Planning Commission meeting, which I did, and I brought to you some new material that I had found, that's, that's my job. And so, and as far as working behind people's back, that's part of the research I do. You know, I, I gather information, and I think I'm pretty good at it. And I'm fair, and I think it would be kind of a, I think it would be a mistake to remove me. So what I'm asking you is that you deny the PC recommendation to remove me from the Planning Commission. A lot of what was presented was topics that were misunderstandings, and nothing, I don't think, even, even Brian McDonald said that there was really nothing that rose to the level of misconduct. There was one more thing, as far as Dave Blumseth, he and I had a little altercation type of thing, and it was a misunderstanding about trust. And I was trying to present a way to him to put trust back into the system with the Planning Commission, with the air that they were, that they said about our ability to extend that time period. And I think it, as it was, it turned out, that wasn't even during the meeting that that happened. It was presented at the Planning Commission as though it happened during a meeting. And that was a discussion he and I were having after the meeting, and it was no part of a misconduct issue or could be construed as misconduct during a public meeting. That was a discussion afterwards, just trying to clarify that. So I thank you for the extra time.
Thanks, Dave.
Any questions?
I read in, in your response to the, I read in your response, did you, in that altercation with, with Mr. Blumseth, did you apologize? Did you, is that what I read in the, did I read that in the, I can't remember?
Yes. I apologized for a misunderstanding that, you know, how he took it, and I apologize for him, or for me presenting it, I guess, in a way that he misunderstood it. And I did apologize for that. And I was upfront about that.
Other questions, Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
Questions of the board?
I'm just going to reiterate what I said in the meeting. I understand the frustration of many of the Planning Commission members in that there has been frustration with Steve and how he, you know, maybe repeats questions or asks questions that aren't necessarily relevant at times to the Planning Commission. However, I don't believe any of that rises to misconduct, and I think we need to be very careful when we're defining what misconduct is when it comes to removing members. I did make the suggestion in the special meeting that we consider defining what misconduct is in our zoning ordinance, so that it is more clear. But as I said in the special meeting, I will, I will not support removing him on the basis of misconduct.
Any other comments?
Well, this, I mean, this is a difficult decision. I respect the planning and zoning's recommendation, yet it is, it's, it's a high standard to remove a volunteer board member. I also want to respect, it's Erica's appointment, like to respect her wishes also. I think Steve has been on the board, was on the board years ago, and I think you were on, you were on some committee with, with the county many years ago. I recall, and I think Commissioner Knutson was, Commissioner Knutson was on, on the board at that time. And, and I think you were, Howard called you crusty, and I think crusty, I think was the term. You do have a, you do have that long, drawn-out, and I think an example was today, you know, you repeated the same things a few times. And I think you need to be more precise and short with your delivery of things. I think that is a, a big problem. And then when you don't get your way, when you lose your, when you lose your debate, state your arguments, and then you have to move on and let that issue go. I think those are very important on, on those type of boards. But, so I'm, I am, I am torn on which way to go with this, so.
I can correct those. My concern is for the Planning Commission members that contacted me, and Steve, it's no disrespect to you, but they feel that they're spending a lot of extra time at these meetings now, and they're considering quitting. And that would concern me, that we would lose some of these members. And I, I know these guys and I respect them. And so, you know, I'm going to have to go with what they, what they're asking me, because I do not want to lose these guys that are putting in the time and helping us get things put in place here. So that's where I'm at.
Other comments?
I'm not on the, I'm obviously not around on the Planning Commission, but I can only do, I can only listen and see and do what I read and hear from other people. And if we are removing someone for misconduct, I don't see the misconduct. I under, I do gather from everybody else that there's some issues, a lot of issues, but I don't know if we can set a precedent to remove somebody for misconduct, but I don't believe that there has been misconduct. Misconduct's a pretty strong word, so.
I, you know, and again, I think we can, I mean, I think it's within our rights to remove at any, I mean, at any time, board member, but would it be, would it be something to table this for two months and see how the, how it, if Steve can improve his demeanors and, and address it in a couple of months?
Yeah, so I'd be.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with that. If he, if he wants to improve what he's doing, and these Planning Commission members are, feel like that he is trying to improve, and they want, they want to work with him, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I think, I think we need to define what is he improving. And I say that because what has been brought forward is misconduct, right?
And that wasn't brought to me, it was brought to me that, that he spends, he's taken a lot of extra time at these meetings, you know, and some of these people are driving a long ways to get to these meetings.
Yep, I drive a half hour.
And, and yeah, and then they're spending a lot of time there, and they're putting in a lot of time, and.
And I.
And, and we got to respect that, because I want, I want good people on that Planning Commission, and I hate to lose them.
And, and I 100% agree with everything they're saying, Richard. It's just how it's been brought forward is misconduct. And, and that, that to me is, is, we're not removing him because of frustration, or because we're afraid of losing Planning Commission members. What has been brought forward to us is we're, we're wanting to remove him based on misconduct. And, and that, that's where I'm, I'm saying we don't have misconduct.
Well, and that's, and I'm not saying he has done misconduct, I'm just saying that they've came to me, and, and it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's hard to work with him for them, and they're considering not, not being on that commission anymore. And that would, that would worry me, if we lost several of them for this, so.
I've got the same concerns that Richard mentioned from several of the members on there that are ready to walk off. But I'd be in agreement to just table this for a couple of months, see how it goes. And see if he corrects. But a lot of it is this repeating question, the same question, time after time, not once or twice, but three or four times, coming right back. So we've got to do that type of improvement. Questions on the board, just table it for a couple of months?
I'm, I'm okay with tabling it. When we define a couple of months, we're coming upon where we may not have Planning Commission meetings for a couple of months. So if we're, if we don't have a meeting in February, and we don't have one in March, and we're back in.
We do have February applicants.
We do have February applicant?
Yeah.
Well, if we table indefinitely, it can be brought back by, at any time.
Yeah.
We just table indefinitely, and if it, if, if the behavior is, if the, that would leave it open for the remaining of the term, of your term. If it's just tabled indefinitely, it would, it would keep it open, this would be sitting there, and it'd be brought back at, at, at a meeting upon request of the board.
And I would also, I would also ask the board's wishes about defining it through our zoning ordinance, defining misconduct. Because if this is something we want to move forward with, we should have a definition. Because I, I would have to, I know we, you know, Mr. Hall brought forward definitions of what misconduct means, and I don't know that that's, that is misconduct. I don't know that that's the same definition we would define misconduct on. So that's one thing that I would, I would ask, is that whether it's the Planning Commission or through our comprehensive plan, whatever, whatever it is, as we're, as we're looking at our zoning ordinances, that we better define how to remove a Planning Commission member when it comes to.
And that would be a member of any board, not just.
Or any, yep. I only say this because this is the wording in our zoning, we have that wording in the Planning Commission, or the zoning ordinance, on how to remove a Planning Commission or Board of Adjustments member.
Do I have a motion to table this indefinitely?
I'll make a motion to table indefinitely, or just a motion to table with no call date.
Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Just off the, there was another attorney in, in the room that morning, too, and off the recordies, and his opinion there was misconduct. So you got two different opinions, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying there was or wasn't.
Mm-hmm.
Other discussion? Hearing none, the call, the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Hearing none? Okay.
Next set of recommendations, January 31st, 2024, Thomas Weddles requesting a conditional use permit to operate a firearms business. During the meeting, he expressed that a lot of this was online sales, that would include some people coming to his home picking up firearms, and then attending gun shows with no type of firearm range at his place except for his own personal use. Recommendation was to approve.
Have a motion to concur?
Do we have to ask if there's anybody here to speak on that?
Tom is here, you want to speak anymore?
Any questions?
Looking for a motion to concur?
I'll make a motion to concur with the Planning Commission recommendations for the conditional use permit to operate a firearms business.
Have a second?
Second.
Second with Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Next applicant was Verizon, requesting to construct a cellular tower on Becker County land. There is a correction to this, it's listed as 250 feet. It'll be a 300-foot tower with a nine-foot lightning ride, so total height is actually 309, 300 for the tower itself, but.
Does that got a light on it, do you know?
Geez, yes.
I think so.
I know, remember the one, remember the one down in Corman did not have a light, but we requested it by an area flyer? I don't know what the height is that they are mandatory, but there's a, but regardless, I would, I would like a light on top for.
You just want to stipulate that, but I'm.
It probably, 200, 300 feet is probably required, but.
I would think so.
But if we put it on there, would guarantee it.
Okay. Questions on the board? There was a few letters, but I think the tower up there is very well needed for public safety and communication and so forth, so. And there's one that was proposed several years ago, and that company just backed down, now Verizon is doing it themselves, so.
All it says is that lighting will be compliant with FAA regulation, so. And just for your reference, I do want to note that there was a tower approved on this site in 2016, but it was not constructed, so it expired within, after the two-year period. But that was for the same, it was 310 feet.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
What's my, Richard, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
The only thing, do you want to, I think that's, I think that'll be required to have lighting, but do you want to add that or not?
You can add that. I don't have a problem with that.
Add the required lighting?
Here we go. With light. With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
The only thing I have for a comp plan update is I just wanted to check in and see if any of you had the markups for those existing conditions, and then the goals and policies. There was some concern with one of you not being able to open it, so I wanted to just make sure everyone else was able to access them. There was no update to them from that January 5th, but I do know that, like Commissioner Nelson made a, a couple of comments on the, or the new goals for the, for the new comp plan, so if you have anything additional to that.
There was a couple of goals to be just preworded for require, or require, require instead of, we shouldn't say require funding, or.
Right.
Possible funding.
Yes.
And then there's a couple of markups in the document itself, the draft.
So if you do have any trouble opening them or something, just let me know.
The, when I did get it open on my computer, or my iPad, the, I don't know if you can mark those up, even in, in Pro. Did anyone else have a problem marking? I couldn't add dialogue in my electronic version.
In Word?
No.
I don't think I could either.
So it's tough to mark up electronically, but I have the hard copy I've been marking on.
I can talk to maybe Tony or somebody about that, we might have to enable editing. Normally, like on a, on my Outlook or Office, I, it, I have to enable it, but it pops up right away. So we might have to just look for it on yours.
Might be different from my iPad, maybe.
Yeah, Apple, it's tough.
Yes. And then the only other thing I would just like to ask is, we're going to be setting these stakeholder meetings, the same day as our workshop. They're planning to meet with you for a few hours, and then one hour with one group and an hour with the other. I had a list put together for both groups, I can't find it now, but I'd like to just send that out to you, and if you concur with it, you can say aye or nay, or if you want to add somebody or what. But we were looking at about 20 people apiece. Just to make sure that we get a turnout, maybe only 50% can attend, but.
Okay. Any other questions, Akal? Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Moving on, considered continuation employment of the county administrator.
Do we have a need for a labor attorney or not? Do we need one?
Well, if we've got any questions, I think he is online.
Do we have questions?
Do we have questions? I don't know, so many questions. Do we have questions for him?
Not this time.
Mr. Chair, I don't, I, I think Carrie's here to, to help guide us also in the procedure. I don't think this is a time for discussion about performance, correct? This is time for just the consideration if we're going to move forward with employment, or how we're going to do that, so. I will, I would make a motion to terminate the administrative position, Pat Omen.
I would like to amend that.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
I'm sorry.
We need to.
We need a second person to come.
Second person, it could be amended.
I will second. And then I would like to amend it, I just, we did, I read the state statute. So I'd like to amend it, that it would be effective February 20th, 2024, and that Mr. Omen will receive three months severance, including salary and benefits, as stated in Mr. Omen's hire letter. And in the interim, Mr. Omen will be suspended with pay. And then if Mr. Omen would like to request a hearing with written reasons for termination, he must do so in writing no later than February, February 13th of 2024. And if a hearing is requested in writing by Mr. Omen, the hearing will be held at the board meeting on February 20th, 2024. Is that okay with the?
You made a motion to amend, so you, that has to have a second.
Yep.
Have a second to that?
I'll make a motion to second the amendment.
You'll second the amendment. Could you, could you state the dates again, or the?
The, the date, if it would be effective February 20th, 2024. And the written request for a hearing would have to be turned in by February 13th, 2024. And then the hearing would be at the board meeting February 20th, 2024.
Okay, do we have legal, legal assistance online?
I, if I may, Josh just sent me a message, he was logging on, but I also believe you have Ann's office on here, Margaret, available.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, have you heard the amended motion?
I have.
Is that, is that appropriate, or does something need to be corrected on that?
That motion is appropriate. As I understand the motion, it is to suspend your current administrator with pay, and then he has the option to demand a hearing, which is consistent with statute. And that you've set a deadline for that hearing, and that you have, for that request for hearing, and then determine what the date of that hearing.
Okay, I, I just want to point out, the administrator is an at-will employee, so that's why there's a severance, but an employee at-will, that is not subject to all the, a lot of the other requirements. Is that correct, Margaret? An at-will employee?
Yeah, he, he is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 375A.06. He is at, an at-will employee, and also pursuant to your employment agreement with him. But there is a statutory requirement with respect to his ability to demand a hearing, demand written charges and a public hearing. And I would suggest that the commissioners discuss what the grounds for the termination will be, if there is going to be a request for a hearing, because you will have to provide those charges before the next board meeting.
Okay, do you, would you, I guess that question will come up if, if we vote, after the vote. I'll ask a question if we vote, but.
We got a motion and a second on the.
I still, I'm, I'm waiting for you guys to get done, but I, I want to have some discussion.
Yeah, there'll be discussion here.
Okay, well, one of my problems is we've never asked this man to improve. I couldn't ask him to improve because he's done an excellent job. It concerns me that a business rep from the Teamsters Union and a handful of employees that got these knocked on doors and got these two commissioners elected can ignore all these people out here, and all the phone calls. That is very scary when, when I think that's who's running this county here now.
They don't care.
When, well, what it seems to me, and I hate to say this, but it seems that they only care about themselves and these employees, and don't care about the county, because certainly they would ask for some improvement from him. He's, I, I can't ask, because he's, I can't improve on him. He's extremely smart, he works very hard for us, he works seven days a week. When he got here, we had personnel files in supervisors' offices over at the Highway Department. That's a violation, there were so many violations here. He, he got, he spent all this time working, getting everything straightened out. I watched him fight for employees, I've watched him punish employees that needed to be punished. And now our turnover is almost half of what it's been for the last three years. That in itself is amazing to me, but I knew it was going to happen because I was watching what he was doing, and I was paying attention to how he was running this county. And the fact is that he, he is the one supposed to be running this county. We're, we're supposed to be setting policy. We're not supposed to be rewarding employees, we're not supposed to be punishing employees. That's not our job. But that's, that's what's going to happen when he leaves. It's, it's very, this is a very sad, sad time for Becker County, because you could see our capital improvement plan. It's one good idea after another, and, but simply because he doesn't bow to these people, and never has and never will. He won't, that's not him. One of the union reps said, you know, he's a tough negotiator, he's not a pushover. And that's what I want. I don't want to go in and tell him what to do, and I don't want anybody else going in to tell him what to do. He's always made it very clear, give me three votes, and I'll do what those three votes say. And, yeah. And so it is very sad, you know, normally, in a private business, he would be getting a bonus, right?
Exactly.
But, because none of us, none of us has, have earned these chairs. We went out and knocked on doors, and we got people to vote for us, okay? He's earned that chair. You should see his degrees. He earned it, and now it's being taken away by people who did not earn it. They got, I did not earn this, I got elected. And we'll, we'll find out if they elect me again or not, but. And we'll find, we'll find out if they elect me again or not, but I did not earn this. Now, I earned my business at home. I worked very hard to do that, but this is, this is just some, something temporary for me. I don't know how long I'll be here. But he earned this, and they don't do this in private business. They do this in government. They're doing it in America. They're doing it in Minnesota. And this is what is destroying our country.
Any other discussion?
Any reasons? Can we have a reason?
Second here. I got a comment too here. You know, it's kind of disappointing to me that all of Pat's good accomplishments here doesn't make any difference to a few board members here. Mainly it's through personal issues that were created probably by the individual. And as I said, his accomplishments have been huge. And it bothers me, over a year ago, and I was told by a fellow commissioner, I have my three votes to get rid of him. Now, how the heck did that happen if there wasn't some pre-go talk going on here? And, you know, looks at this meeting, they're going to succeed with what was stated in me over a year ago. For me, it's a sad day for Becker County. It gives Becker County another big black mark, which we always have for the last several years, finding administrators. And it bothers me, and I go to joint meetings, talk to fellow commissioners, and they start, what's happening in Becker County, and they start to laugh. You've got quite a mess up there. That is disheartening for me, sitting here, being on this Becker County Board. My, most of, 14 years on this board, this is the worst we've ever had. I have one question for the attorney. Margaret, you still on?
Mr. Chair, you have both.
Yes, I'm still on.
Margaret, this is, portrait focus on, is it okay if Pat answers any questions or has a comment, closing here and discussion, or not?
I'm sure Pat can have an opportunity to provide a response. There's nothing that would preclude that.
I guess it would just fair, we went through due process with another individual here at this meeting and let him speak. So I guess I'd leave it up to Pat if he wants to respond to anything, or just, I know he probably has some written items that he'd like to go in his file and, or better, receive a copy of it. I'll leave it.
Thank you, Chair. So the, I appreciate the applause, you know, it's very emotional, it can be for me. As it could be for you, if you're in my position, but the county's going to do just fine without me. You guys have to get together and work together as citizens. Let your votes decide what you want accomplished at the county. But I do believe these commissioners mean well. I do, I do know they care about the county. They may be faulty in their decisions, that's your opinion, it might be my opinion, but they do mean well. What I would tell you is, the one thing I would leave this county with is, this is a county administrator form of government. That's governed by statutes 375A. And, you know, Chris Verber actually said something very correct. It's the county administrator that runs the county. The county board at a board meeting votes on policies and directs the board through its votes. When either of those things don't happen, you get problems, and I think you're seeing some of those. I'm very proud of some of the things we've accomplished, and I'm just going to cover a few of them, but I want you to know that they're not just me. This is a team approach here. These are solid department heads. I know they've never had 101 meetings before. I made sure we had those on a monthly basis. I wanted them to be able to provide constructive feedback to me, as well as me provide direction to them. But, you know, it's a fairly long list, but I'm very proud of it. And we've been on a bad and great system for 40 years, never been updated. I identified that early on, that we need to move to a class and comp system, and to the board's credit, they've now supported that. Performance reviews haven't been done in 40 years. With the exception of human services, I don't want Denise Warren to send me an email and say, wait, what about us? But they just weren't, and it's in our policy. The county policy says every year you get an annual review. Why do you get an annual review? You want to know how good you're doing. You also want to know how you're going to improve. So we made it mandatory for people to do annual reviews. Exit interviews haven't been done for years. We want to know when people leave, why they leave. We want to learn from our mistakes. Job description updates haven't been updated in 40 years. Just when you add all those together, you can appreciate when someone says we got a morale problem, why we got a morale problem? We're not valuing our employees to the extent that we should. We're not giving them the idea to contribute to their job descriptions, to contribute in interviews. They're doing that now, but they weren't doing that before, so, you know, I spent two years, you know, inheriting issues that have been going on for decades. But I did that with direct talk with the board and direct talk with our employees. And I know our employees respect me. I know our departments respect me. I know I've heard some rumors, but I meet with them one-on-one. The bargaining units, it's a contentious relationship when you got to negotiate with them. But I know they respect management. They respect our negotiation team. And, and we made changes there, too. You know, you heard a lot of stuff about all these legal fees, this administrator, all these legal fees. You know, I'm responsible for those legal fees. Those are the board's direction. But what I've been able to bring the legal fees down is we didn't bring an attorney into negotiations anymore, saving just about $25,000 a year. There's been a number of investigations that have been going on in departments. Those have been independent of me. I didn't cause them, but we had to do them because citizens, or excuse me, our employees have a right to have investigations if they feel there's some type of issue. Those cost money. But those legal fees, we brought those down. And, and the ones that have gone up have been independent. And what we look at, what we should be looking at, is why people are doing investigations to begin with. For 20 years, there's been these committees that two commissioners sit on, and they've never posted the agenda. It's a violation of the open meeting law for 20 years. Now, I caught that and I didn't stand up and say, bad board or bad department heads. We met as a department head team and said, you know what? Post the agendas. Once you post the agendas, there are no open meeting law issues. Understand statutes, learn from that, do better. But at the end of the day, even posting our salaries, our highest three salaries, doing the director of emergency management, that has not been done for years. So those are things the administrator does. And you don't do it for bragging rights. You do it so we do better. We don't have a risk. We don't get sued. We don't have a legal liability or a grievance. There've been a lot of best practices that I've liked to have seen that the board's not ready for, but I hope they will. I hope we have a committee of the whole meeting. I hope the board will approve a capital improvement plan they just did today. I hope, I hope they can do these things. But one of the biggest items, too, that we have to remember is, you know, you know, the press is an independent press, and I think they're so important for us. But when we did surveys to all our people as part of the community-based comprehensive plan, 80% of the people responded wanted a county newsletter. That tells me something. That means they're thirsty for information that they're not getting somewhere else. So I hope the board moves on that, too. Fact-based reporting, fact-based newsletter that goes out to the departments. But I think one of the biggest things was, and we could talk about it now, is the level of BCA non-compliance that we've had in our departments. In three departments, we had zero compliance. And that occurred because we started asking questions. And I know you guys remember getting signal, that article back in June of 2022, who said, everyone's leaving because of the administrator. They're all running for the hills because of the administrator. The fact is, is people are leaving for a lot of the things that I'm talking about. How do we know that? It's because we did exit interviews. So, I mean, you know, the fact is, is I'm in new ground, never been terminated before, so this is due to me. But at the end of the day, I'm even very pleased with what I've accomplished here, and I'm not sad at all. This is a democracy. The commissioners have spoken, and you need to respect that. I respect that. And I will have procedures and options to go through things, and I'll do what I think is right for me. But like I said, I'm very proud of what we're doing, and I think we can do better, and I think the board can do better. But at the end of the day, they're your commissioners. And I have to tell you, I'm very proud that Commissioner Nelson, with all the issues that I've had with him, it was, one of his reasons getting hired was him. And I've told him that. So there's good in everyone. There's good in him. There's good in all five of these people. And I'm emotional, not because I like to cry. I never cried. I cry when women cry. I cry when my cats die. That's when I cry. But I'm emotional because I so much appreciate how much you care, and that's the community I want to work for. So you're a beautiful community. So I think I'll leave it at that, but I think one question just for the board is, is there's been a vote to terminate. Is there any grounds for termination? Is there a reason? I guess I would ask the board for that.
While we're last, I think through the evaluation that was public, the main thing I heard was communication. And to me, communication is not grounds to dismiss somebody. It's something you work with, the individual, and communication is, like I said, then, it's a two-way street. If you don't reach out, you're not going to probably get your communication. And one other thing, I think since I've been on the county board, this is the only administrator that's had a formal evaluation. So just like all of a sudden, we're, need one here. I'm not saying we, the other ones shouldn't have any evaluations, but it never happened.
What I don't understand is both of these new commissioners ran on employees. They knocked on, they had human services people knocking on doors, we're losing employees, we're losing employees, we're losing employees. How do we not deal with this employee? How do we not say, you know, if communication is the problem, how do we not make that better? No, we get rid of this employee, so that, that's what concerns me. And then when I look at our employee numbers and I see that they're half of what they've been, and I see why. I see the way he treats them. I see him stand up to commissioners and get right in between the commissioner and the employee and tell the commissioner, that's my employee. You yell at me. Don't yell at them. The man has got, he's got a lot of nerve. He's a strong man. I like that union said it best, he's not a pushover. He's got values. He's got morals. He's got everything. I wish I had a job for this man, because I could make money and just sit back and watch it. And he could, he could, he's actually, he's actually saved you guys a lot of money. And when we start losing employees and retraining them, then we're going to spend money there and the services, the quality of service in this county is going to drop. And that's what I really hate, you know, but, yeah, so that's all I got to say.
Any other discussion?
I don't have any discussion.
No, this is between the board. We got a motion, second, discussion, so.
Mr. Chair, is, is Margaret there? Could we get quiet, please? Is Margaret online still?
Yes, I'm still here.
My question is, Pat asked for some reasonings or rationale. Is this an appropriate time to explain that, or is that a written, written request? Or, or what, what's proper in this case? I mean, before our vote or after our vote?
Yeah, I mean, either way, I think it would be a good idea for the commissioners to indicate the reasons. And I do have a list from your performance evaluation.
I think I have that also.
Okay. And so it would be a good idea to determine that, so then it can, could be put in the charges, should the administrator demand a hearing pursuant to a statutory right to do so.
But Margaret, should that be before or after the vote?
Well, you have a, you have a motion and a second, so you should probably vote, and then you could do it after that.
Well, Chair, could I just mention something? So the, I had a, and I think this is a new attorney, but just for the board's knowledge that, you know, my, my review was a public review, an open review, not a written review, so I'm not, she's saying there's something in writing. I'm not sure what that is. So the, so she might want to clarify that.
So we had to provide something in writing.
Oh, I kind of heard that she had some from her, she had written things down for my review. Maybe she could clarify that. It was, she wrote it down. Maybe she watched the video or something like that. I just want to clarify that.
I can answer that.
Should we vote, should we vote first, or?
Don't you get to answer the question, then you can vote.
Question, you said, Barry, you have it. Why hasn't that the rest of the board members? You haven't first name contact with them down there, or what? It's just very disturbing that one person on the board gets the information, or, so. With that, I guess we'll have to call for the vote, and it's going to be a roll call, roll call vote. Barry?
Hi.
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 Pardon?
Hi.
Nay?
Nay.
Three to two. Okay, we're going to list some of the reasons why you guys are getting rid of him.
Mr. Chair, and Margaret, is this appropriate time to ask or to state? Is it just things that were, were spoken of at the public hearing, or at the, or is it just things that we have experienced? Is it?
I would base it upon the information discussed at the performance evaluation.
And Mr. Chair, again, Pat's, Pat's discussion here earlier today was very, it was very good. I appreciate his professionalism, and if I'd have had, if I would have had more of that directed at me through these last couple of years, I can see why you guys are passionate for him, because that was, that was a great, it was a great talk. It was a great statement from him, and I appreciate that. And if I would have had that this whole time, I think I would be in a whole different space, but I haven't had that type of relationship that you guys have.
Yeah, but you went in and damaged that relationship, but he tried to repair it. And you damaged it by threatening him and by trying to intervene with employees. You know you did. And you threatened him, you threatened to make his life miserable. Yeah, well, I'm going to stick up for him when you're not telling the truth, Barry.
The issues here are failure to advise commissioners about significant events impacting the county. We can elaborate on some details on that. Again, that was failure to advise all commissioners about significant events impacting the county. Failure to provide commissioners with information regarding agenda items, information and agendas to meetings and. Failure to provide documents upon a commissioner's request. Failure to follow through on promise to meet commissioners on a monthly basis. Making unauthorized offers to unions beyond the budgetary authority. Failure to advise commissioners about the invalid motion to have a moratorium on feedlots. Anyone have any other? I'm just, I have more, but I want to stick to what was, specifically what was.
Never opened meeting.
So those are, those are some of the generic ones. I think, Margaret, do we provide more, more for that if he requests a public hearing, or we can expand on those?
That's correct. So the point of the public hearing is that he has an opportunity for a public hearing on the charges.
And I think you're done voting. I was just going to say that I've already got a detailed answer for all those items, so I look forward to that. But I think we have nothing more on the agenda. I think you can adjourn, Chair.
Mr. Chair, just to, just before, before you adjourn, Margaret, so would it be appropriate for us to, to forward all the questions, all the concerns or all the things to your office as individual commissioners, and you would put those in a, in a master list for us, for Pat to receive at his, upon his request?
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
There's one of the items you listed there, Commissioner Nelson, that's not quite true, and that's unauthorized offer to unions. I was on the negotiating team, fired Meyer coming on board when that was done, so.
That is, that is incorrect.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we're here to argue any of these today, though. I don't want.
This started long. This started long before you got on the dais. I'm not getting into that right now, so it'll come up later. No.
Margaret, I have a question. Do, what, could you explain to us what in, what in the interim, in the interim suspension means to, for Ms. Roman?
Uh, it means that he is suspended from his duties. And so the county board has the opportunity to appoint a interim administrator to perform those duties during that suspension.
Mr. Chair, do you have a preference who you want to appoint as authorizing signer for administrator?
I would have preference during this interim period to have HR Carrie on the lot. She's right in the front office. She's part of the administration team. And.
If you're willing.
I'd appreciate.
Can we do it by committee?
Working, we, we talked once a little bit about this too, if things like this happens. And in the past, it's kind of the HR director that kind of filled in. But in close contact with the board chair on issues, but you're right there for day-to-day operations. Oh, that'd be my.
Mr. Chair, I can sense a, a little bit of hesitancy from Carrie. And we have, we have a great department heads that, that I would encourage you to, to lean on advice and, and I don't have a problem being the authorized signer, but maybe you could work through that committee to have you, to get that pre-approval through department head and executive committee. Well, I'm, I'm just saying that that's, I would ask that, that you do that. Or, or maybe you have in the interim, just if you would prefer Mary be the, the signer of, as the state, as the auditor. And if she's, if Carrie's not, if Carrie's a little tentative, I would suggest you, she work with.
This is something I think we can meet on and, and discuss and.
No, I think we need to act at this meeting on who signs.
Commissioner Eng said resigners at least two weeks before we even named somebody. And I was chair at that time, so. I want to, before I make choice on somebody, I want to make sure we're comfortable and I'm comfortable with somebody that's working with this meeting and chair.
Can we, can we authorize the board chair to sign off in anything that's in a, in an emergency state or? If that's, if that's, I, I will make that motion to authorize the board chair to sign off for as, as the administrator in the, until we come up with a formal plan.
I'll second that.
Hold, any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.